Education and Youth Committee Hearing. Our hearing tonight is focused on the Kerwin Commission and Baltimore's commitment to education funding. My name is Councilman Zeke Cohen. I am Chair of the Education and Youth Committee. To my far right is Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer. To his left is Councilman John Bullock.
Hello, Sir.
To my left is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you.
To her left, President Brandon Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Chris Burnett. We are joined this evening by representatives from Mayor Young's office, including Matt Stegman, Nina Demalis, Nicholas Blandy, Lester Davis. From Finance, Henry Raymond. From the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, Tisha Edwards. From the Council President's Office, Stephanie Mavronas, Kalen Young, Rebecca Simmons, General Counsel, Michael Huber, and Dominic McElly. We also have with us Dr. Sonia Santelissis, CEO of our school system. I want to thank all the staff who have helped put this hearing together. And also want to say we are on Charm TV. So for folks watching at home, please know that this hearing will involve testimony both from folks who are on panels and then from individuals. We ask that you keep your testimony to less than three minutes. At three, we will cut you off just because we have a lot of folks tonight. And tonight, we are going to hear from students, parents, educators, our CEO, our Finance Director, business leaders, and Baltimoreans from all walks of life about the need to strategically invest in our schools. We're going to hear a lot about budgets and audits and a commission named after a man called Britt Kerwin. But fundamentally, this hearing is about a long overdue moment of truth for Baltimore. The reality is that in 2019, we, the city government, have not done enough to provide the world-class education that our children deserve. And while there is plenty of blame to be thrown around in other directions, we all need to take responsibility and get our own house in order. This is a financial issue, but more importantly, it's a moral issue. If we want to decrease the criminalization of our kids, then it would behoove us to never send them to schools that look like jails. Tonight's hearing will start with a few words from the bill sponsor, the resolution sponsor, President Scott. And then we will proceed, as is our tradition in this committee, with a student panel. President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for spending your night here in City Hall. It is clear here tonight that our city cares a great deal about the future of our schools and the type of environment we are cultivating for our children. We have to make the education of children in Baltimore a priority in Baltimore's budget. For my entire lifetime, the children have not been a priority in Baltimore's budget. That is why one of the first things I did as Council President was putting this resolution to ask the Department of Finance to proactively prepare a fiscal plan to increase funding for our public schools. Even before the new funding formula proposal was finalized, we knew that the Kerwin Commission's recommendations would mean the city of Baltimore would need to invest more local dollars into our school system. Stepping up our local investment in our schools is not an option, it's our responsibility. We cannot pass the buck when it comes to our children. As a city, it is our obligation to put our money where our mouth is. We may not have direct authority over our school system here at the local level, but these are our children and these are our school buildings. I attended public schools in Baltimore City from pre-K through 12th grade. Everyone knows I'm a proud graduate of Mervaux High School, where I received an excellent education. However, it wasn't until ninth grade that I had a classroom with air conditioning. I know how it is to sit in a classroom without heat. I know how it is to sit in a classroom without air conditioning. And for many of those years, I also know all the other challenges that our students face for overcrowded classrooms, outdated systems, and computers and technology. We know how that makes us feel as a student. It makes you feel like to your state and your city, you don't matter and neither does your education. The sad fact is that numbers would give you the impression, the same impression. The state's own analysis says that if our schools had been funded properly under the existing funding formula, we would have at least $290 million a year. Every single one of our students deserves a 21st century education and a 21st century school building, regardless of neighborhood, regardless of race, regardless of income. Meeting these increased funding requirements developed by the Kerwin Commission will require Baltimore City Government to fundamentally reorient its priorities to provide our public schools with the investment they deserve. This will require commitment and sacrifice. It won't happen through the budgetary equivalent of changing in the sofa cushions. We cannot rely on annual budget surpluses to painlessly close this gap. We know stepping up our local commitment to our schools so that they are fully funded and more equitable is the right thing to do. What we do here is really about whether, from here, is whether we have the fortitude as leaders in the careers to invest in the future. Our students, the young people in Baltimore, are the future. The question is not what we should do, it's are we going to do it or not? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you, Mr. President. We are also joined by my colleague from the 11th District, Councilman Eric Costello. All right, we will now proceed with our first panel. We're going to hear from some young people. It is their education that is at stake. They are the center of this conversation. So, and I know there's a few folks that are stuck in traffic, but what we're going to do in terms of panels is I'm going to ask you to come up if you could just sit in these chairs right up here so that we can see you all together. Are the students from intersection here yet? All right, they're on their way, as is Somos. I'm going to bring up Mr. Joshua Turner to start us off, if you would.
Good afternoon. I'm here representing Students Demand Action, as well as myself, and just to go a little bit more further in depth into why we should fully fund our schools. I don't think it's even a question of whether we should, it's just a matter of why haven't we? When we look at the numbers across our country, especially when it comes down to underfunding our schools inside of low impoverished neighborhoods, we've seen that undercutting schools are correlated with high rates of incarceration, also with high rates of gun violence within cities that are providing their students with low quality of education. What this means is that the education gap within our country is heavily correlated to other economic means such as gun violence or whatnot. I think that we've looked at education more as of a token that should be given to some and not all. When we look at the history and the practices that have happened throughout this country, redlining has heavy dictations on the education system. It's not even a secret. If you look at historically disenfranchised areas, you'll also see low impoverished schools. There's no reason why in the world that we should have children within the city of Baltimore that don't have heating in their schools. There's no reason why I should be able to volunteer in a school and see that water fountains covered up because there's lead contaminated. And basically with this sends is a clear message that shows that our students aren't valued. And this is all about where we place in our values and how do we value our students? And when you don't provide someone with the right environment in order to facilitate a proper form of education, it tells them that they're not valued, meaning that it contributes to the further despondent state that already exists within the city of Baltimore. I don't think that this should even be something that should be even questionable whether or not we should fund our schools, it's just a matter of how much funding we should allocate and how are we going to make sure this funding is being used in the proper places, to make sure that it's not displacing, to make sure that it actually goes to the places that it needs to go to, so that our students are receiving a fair quality of form of education. Honestly, that the current state that exists within the city of Baltimore violates our founding principles even as a country where we're supposed to receive the same quality of everything, that's not happening across the board. We see that within other economic practices. We also see that within just students that can't receive a basic quality of education. When I was in public schools, when I was in the city of Baltimore, actually receiving a public school education, it was almost asinine to see that I wasn't able to upload basic documents onto a computer because the processor was too slow. I wasn't able to simply achieve the same things or take the same exact classes my counterparts would take that live in other areas throughout the state of Maryland. So this is not even a question of whether or not we should invest in our children, it's more of why haven't we been doing it and really looking at the more obligation our city has to do it in the very first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Ivan from the Algebra Project, come on up. Thank you for joining us. Again, we're hearing from some students. Could the young folks from the Algebra Project come on up and give your testimony? Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Ivan Roberts, I'm from the Baltimore Algebra Project. I go to Bar High School, Early College, and pretty much Kerwin is something that's like needed for a proper education. There's no reason that Maryland is one of the richest states in America, but the big issue with Kerwin is that like we can't afford, we can't afford it. Then that means that there's other means to get it, you feel me? There is money, we're printing money into other resources, but neglect the our youth. Baltimore puts about $500 million into like policing, but only less than $300 million to education. There's like a big gap in between those numbers. And that shows like where our city's priorities are. Kerwin is a means to teach, give students resources to properly succeed in life beyond K through 12. And that's something that we haven't been able to do in the past, because a lot of times when students go off to like college or work forces, they are left behind. A lot of our students, when they go off to college, take media classes because they're not able to compete with their peers. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you. Come on up, and if you could just state your name and who you represent and where you go to school.
My name is Linnea, and I'm a student leader of the Baltimore Intersection. I feel like that the city is poorly funding for school educations for all youth, but mainly for, I say, black colored youth. Mainly I say that because if you look at, you know, the differences on Baltimore City and Howard County schools, you can see that there's a budget of, Howard County gets 46%. Even up at Rondo gets 42%, but budgeting for education at Baltimore City is only 14%. And the main reason why I blame it's racial is because in both Howard and Rondo, there's only, there's a majority more of white kids than there is black, and Baltimore City has more of black children than white. And I find that as an issue as a black youth myself, that just based off of my race of where I've come from, that I have to get funded less money for education while other schools get more funding for, basically, just because of their skin tone. And previously, what Ivan said, the way that Baltimore City puts more funding into officers or police departments, more than education, that's, I feel like that's also wrong. And recently, this year, there was a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, and they had put out a statement basically saying, protect each other and don't fall into the trap, that they're only kids, some are criminals, keep the current policies and consistent decree in mind. If ordered to arrest, put the name on scene. And I find that very, very honestly rude to children. There should be no reason that you're funding more for police officers, but yet they're afraid of youth, when we're the ones who I feel like don't have anything, but you have police officers that y'all fund more money to when they are the ones with the weapons, they're the ones that can harm children. What all children are trying to do is just get education that they need and deserve to go into college. And I honestly feel like that's a huge problem to me. There should be no reason, there should be no way that kids have to be afraid of just walking around the street or at least trying to get to school without a cop just driving by them and just arresting them for no reason. And that's more fun than going to that instead of kids with education. So, and it's just, in general, kids just need more education because another thing that's a problem is equity for me. Another problem is that all the adults get to make all the decisions for children, but yet none of them are impacted. None of the kids even have information of what's going on for their own future. How are the adults going to make decisions for youth when it has nothing to do or impact on y'all? I feel like also another problem is youth just needs to be more involved. They need to be more informed of what's going on, and it's going to impact their future and plus generations after ours, going from pre-K on up even into college and then leaving college to have a career path. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we give it up for our young people? You know, we've heard a lot of demonizing of youth in our city, especially lately, but when you hear from young folks, when you hear from their voices, you know, to me, that's what moves us forward. And so I appreciate you all coming and being a part of this hearing and leading us off. We are now going to hear from our agencies, beginning with our school CEO, Dr. Sonia Santelissis. And you have a presentation as well. Excellent.
Good evening, Chair Cohen, and to our colleagues in the City Council. It's good to see you all this evening. I will try to be brief. Do you want to give me a time band target?
Sure. Could you try to keep it between five and 10?
I will do my best, thank you. That's why I figured I'd ask at the beginning instead of at the end. Very good. Great. So we will get started. First, just in terms of what we're going to, what I'm going to run through really quickly so that we can see where we are now, you'll see here, we'll talk about our current funding, where we are with academic progress as city schools, the promise of Kerwin and how we are factoring that in, and then the impact of a variety of funding scenarios. Quickly, in terms of city schools at a glance, what we're just reminding you here is where we are right now with regards to our student population, as well as where we are with staff. Our staff represent really a diverse group of talented professionals, and with regards to the city, you will see that we continue to serve large numbers, excuse me, of students from low income backgrounds, as well as African American, and black, and Latinx students, as well as students with disabilities. I think when we begin talking about our current funding formula, it's important to note the sources of funding, and it is a way to just remind everyone that the percentage of funding for each LEA, that's Local School District, that comes from local and state government, really depends on the relative wealth of each county. For Baltimore City Schools, what you'll see on the right is where we currently receive our funding. You'll see that the vast majority of our funding currently comes from the state, as opposed to a comparative district in Howard County, you will see that a far greater portion of Howard County's funding comes from their locality. So if you were to match the state comparison in terms of funding, what you'll see is that Baltimore City is far more dependent on, excuse me, on its funding from the state. Baltimore City currently dedicates, according to the Department of Legislative Services that just recently came out with its most recent calculation, Baltimore City dedicates 14.4% of the city budget towards education. The state average is 36%. In terms of the current funding formula, I think one of the things that we want to continue to remind the City Council and our city overall is that by the state's own analysis, which you heard earlier, even from one of, when you heard from Council President, that we actually receive, should be receiving $342 million more each year under the current formula. Now, for a school with 600 students, that's an additional $2.4 million annually. Now, you ask what does $2.4 million buy at a school level? For a school with 600 students, you're talking about a literacy coach, a math coach, you're talking about after-school programming, you're talking about full-time, not half a year of art and then you shift to music, but full-time art, full-time music, full-time gym teachers. You're also talking about enrichment and extracurricular activities, and you're also talking about additional teacher supports for students with additional needs. I want to also point out that, again, this analysis, while it has been done here by the state, it has also been reinforced nationally. If you look at the July 2018 Heckinger Report, Maryland is one of six states where the wealthiest 25% of school districts receive more money than the poorest. That's the state of Maryland, right? We have the 25, we have 25% of school districts receive more money, the wealthiest than the poorest. So what does that say about where we are in terms of equitable funding as a state? The Education Law Center also found that Maryland's school funding system is one of the most regressive nationwide. So that's across the country. Maryland's school funding formula is considered among the most regressive. Oh, sorry. With regards to Bridge to Kerwin, because one of the things that I think is important to remind folks is that due to systemic underfunding, city schools identified a $130 million budget gap. It is because of the commitment of folks both here within the city and state. We were able to reduce that gap, to bridge that gap, it's what we call, have called the Bridge to Kerwin for the last three years, for $60 million in additional funding for three years from both the city and the state. That Bridge to Kerwin has really been used to invest in the work that we have been doing with regards to our strategic plan, called the Blueprint for Success. And again, I just want to thank both the city leadership, as well as state leadership and our city delegation for helping us to bridge this gap over the last three years. Part of why we're here tonight is because that three years, folks, is officially coming to an end. The other piece that is important to keep in mind, even when we talk about funding over the last three years or moving forward, is that as funding stays flat, expenses continue to rise. So expenses don't stay flat, cost of living increases. What you'll see with regards to Maryland teacher salaries over time is that over time, the cost continues to rise because, again, with regards to cost of living and salaries, Baltimore City has pretty much kept in check with most of the LEAs across Maryland. So even though we have filled a gap for three years, the expenses have not stayed flat, both within city schools as well as across the state. In terms of taking a look at, again, one of the claims that is constantly kind of launched against city schools is that we are bloated centrally, that we have most of the money being held centrally, and what you will see is that this actually is not true. What you'll see with regard to this pie chart is the fact that frankly, every study done shows that city schools is actually the lowest, we have the lowest proportion of our funding that is going to non-instructional personnel in the state. So we are tied actually with Queen Anne's County for the lowest investment in central. So this, the kind of quip or refrain that all of the money is going to central just does not bear out if you look at where the money is actually being spent. The other piece with regards to, and I know that it's very easy to talk about mismanagement, it's easy, it's a way to kind of frankly distract from some of the deeper issues that even our young people surfaced. What you'll see is that our audit findings have not only been sound for a number of years, but that we were actually called out by Clifton Larson Allen in terms of the fact that our audit results rank as some of the highest that they've seen, and actually ones that we should be proud of, and that is due to the hard work of our finance staff. The majority of our audits, I think, over the last probably 10 years, Mary Ann, have been in on time, so we don't delay with our audits. And so again, when we talk about mismanagement, I think we have to make sure that we are eschewing kind of convenient, overly simplistic answers that are frankly not borne out in the data, nor are they borne out in our audits. With regards to fund balance, I know that one of the things that has been discussed has been the amount that, excuse me, and y'all have to forgive me, I caught a cold over Thanksgiving break, so that's why I'm feeling a little raspy. With regards to our fund balance, what's important to know is that it includes a combination of funds we're required to reserve through the committed and unassigned balance, non-spendable amounts, and our assigned balance, which is used to fund time-sensitive district priorities. Thank you very much. So for example, what you'll see is that in terms of non-spendable, if you see the total commitment, where are we, by law? Total committed, $20 million. So it's easy for people to look and say, oh, city schools is sitting on $20 million over here that they could be spending. That's like telling me to go home and drain my savings account to a zero balance, which would be irresponsible as a school system. We're required by law to keep a set amount as part of our committed fund balance. It's frankly included in the profile of fiscal responsibility. I would not be responsible, nor would the Board and Board Chair Chinia is with us this evening, oh, as well as Commissioner, Lord have mercy, you can tell I have a cold, Bon Dima, that's my fault, are here today. It would be fiscally irresponsible with regards to our oversight to frankly break down the guardrails and not have any in our fund balance. The other piece that you will see is that because of the Board's additional fiscal oversight, they have as part of our Board policy to set a target of 3% of city schools' total budget also be held and unassigned, so you will see an additional $36 million there. If you combine that, that $183 million is actually part of what we are committed to show and demonstrate in the case of unanticipated expenses. Now, an example of, oh, excuse me, some of what those might be are the other part of our fund balance, our fund balance which is assigned. This is a great example of the kinds of expenses that arise during the course of a year or that arise when systems fall. So for example, our ERP system is, how old is it now, Mary Ann?
Twenty.
So our ERP system is now 20 years old. This is where our data, this is where our data systems talk to one another, everything from payroll to human capital. We're probably, what, almost a decade over when we should have?
Yeah, they won't support it any longer.
Exactly. So we are now at the point where that $25 million within fund balance is going, again, because we're responsible in our management to replace a system that is about 10 years past its life cycle. You'll see in other areas, an elevator project. We have schools, when the elevator goes, many of them are past their life expectancy. In order to serve the needs of students, we have to be able to put the elevator in. Marie G. Farring, I visited there today, I did a classroom visit, walk with Cabinet, and what we saw as we walked through, we actually weren't looking for this, we were actually looking at reading lessons, but what you saw is, this is a school where literally the population increases every month over the year because of new arriving students. And so we're at the point now where that $6 million, again, in terms of being assigned, is to help with overcrowding at that school. So those are just a few examples that I think is important when we talk about fund balance. I think we need to do so with regards to, one, the reality of what it means to run an urban school system with an aging infrastructure, and number two, what is, again, financially responsible behavior, in the same way that my husband will not let me drown my savings account, my children's college savings account, to buy a new vacation. Similarly, we are not going to drain our fund balance to plug year-to-year holds without looking over the long-term trajectory of our fiscal health. So with regards to the current landscape, I think one of the things that we need to also be able to understand is where we are with regards to setting our schools up to make choices that I referenced earlier. Do I have a half, if I'm a principal, do I have a half a year of art? Or do I have an additional reading coach or literacy coach? Those are the kinds of choices that we're forcing our school leaders and our schools, frankly, to make. So even with that, and many of you know, because I've testified before about where we are within city schools, we are within city schools, I have never, nor will I ever, use our fiscal state to say that there is nothing we can be doing now. We actually have done the work with the $60 million investment from the state and the city. We actually have reprioritized resources. And we have prioritized those resources around the areas within our blueprint. And we have prioritized making sure that we are building towards sound instructional practices and healthy learning environments for our students. As a result of that, what you'll see at the beginning of my administration when I entered, and this is just one snapshot of ELA because it was one of our focus areas when I entered, we had 40 schools improving in that school year in their ELA, that's English Language Arts Performance. We're now up to 106 schools for grades 10 for high school. We only had five schools when I entered that were showing any progress. Five high schools across the entire city that were showing any progress in increasing students' literacy achievement. This past year, we now have 23. So when we talk about educational movement and growth, we have not been remaining stagnant. We are continuing to move. I think the other piece that I'll just say briefly is that bottom, that bottom figure on schools improving five-plus percentage points or more, those are schools that are actually beating the state average in terms of their rate of improvement. We went from having three schools across the entire district to 29. So we are moving. If you look at our high school graduation rates, those are increasing year after year. What this means is that we are doing the deep work and looking at what is occurring with our young people, but we're doing so in an environment where it's becoming increasingly difficult to act as if stagnant resourcing with rising cost is not, is not undercutting the rate of the progress that we could be making. In terms of the blueprint for America, for Maryland's future, I think one of the things that is a great indicator of some of what that extra investment yields is that what you'll see is that 118 city schools received the Concentration of Poverty Grant. And with that, school systems were able to, including ours, all of those schools saw investments in nursing, community schools, centrally funded wraparound supports, and then choice of supports. What we found in our schools, so when I was walking around schools at the beginning of the year, principals were noting the difference in having a full-time social worker as opposed to a half-time social worker. Principals were noting that they could reinstate mentoring programs for youth. They were able to buy an additional coach. They were able to do those kinds of wraparound services that they were not able to do previously. I think the other piece with regards, that was asked, was with regards to potential changes in the funding sources. What you will see in the first four rows are the funding sources that will go away at the end of the Bridge to Kerwin. So that means that again, as we have over the last three years because of the bridge being held steady, you'll see in the first four rows what support will now go away when the bridge goes away. We want to thank Mayor Young for his commitment that he announced last week to make sure that we have a $25 million increase in city schools fund. So if you take away all of those negatives and then you add the additional $25 million, you get an idea of where we will find ourselves. Similarly, what you will see is that the personnel increased. There was a teacher salary incentive grant that came through the state legislation. So we are funding the teacher salary increase that we negotiated with our partners in the Baltimore Teachers Union. You'll see that increase. And then you'll also see an OTPS increase, which assumes a 1% increase for all contracts for all of our labor units. So with regard to projected budget gap, right now, if you look at revenue and expenses, you'll see that there's a projected budget gap right now of about $60 million. Now, one of the things that I do want to say about that is that is as of today, that is as of December 3rd, we still have work to do with regards to other expenses, seeing what else comes in, being able to capture, excuse me, being able to see what the rate of expenses will be through the end of the year and also do some projections as we now go through district-wide budgeting. So I do want to say that, again, this is as of December that you will see here, but the main message, I think, from this slide is that the bridge has mattered, the bridge counts. And again, we still need to take it under consideration as we plan for the fiscal year '21. So without Kerwin, what you will see, that if the budget gap goes unresolved in fiscal year '21, city schools could face a $150 million budget gap in FY '22. So that is if there is no Kerwin, if there is no bridge, we will be back to where we were when I entered in school year '15, '16, because again, expenses don't go away. They actually, the cost of doing business actually increases. So why does Kerwin matter? We have come before this body and the public before to talk about our work in investing in our future document. This is where we in city schools with a number of partners did a great deal of work asking the question, what does a 21st century education for every young person in Baltimore City look like? And what would be an approximate investment that would need to be made? So what you'll see here are areas that we hit. I will, I'm sure I'm close to my 10 minutes if I haven't passed it, but you were very good. You didn't, you didn't like wave me down.
Brandon.
Huh?
You're good.
Oh, good, very good. I tried, I tried to go fast. But again, I will say this, that I do think as we look at where we are moving forward, the bridge, and again, I say thank you for the bridge, it helped us get through the last three years, but we're now at that day of reckoning point where with the bridge going away, with the cost of doing business increasing, we are going to have to face some very tough questions as both a city and a school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lises. I do want to recognize my colleague, Councilman Pinkett, as well as apologies for not recognizing our school board members who are here as well. Dr. Santa Lises and colleagues, if it's all right, we're going to move directly to finance and then ask questions after they present.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the committee and the council. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. I appear before you this evening because the resolution requires me to give an update to the council regarding the fiscal readiness of the city to comply with the recommendations put forth by the Kerwin Commission. First, let me begin by saying that Mayor Young has stated that he fully supports the Kerwin Commission and that the city will comply with the eventual funding legislation that is expected to be approved by the 2020 General Assembly. The city and our partner, the Baltimore City Public School System, will closely monitor the actions of this year's General Assembly to determine the ultimate financial requirements legislated. I also want to be clear that the current commission recommendation to increase education funding and to alter the school funding formulas will have a profound impact on Baltimore City's general fund budget. Our preliminary estimates show that the initial impact of the $132 million year-one increase in education spending would require a reduction of approximately 12.5% of the city's general fund discretionary spending. This number does not remain constant. As you are aware, the funding ramps up over a 10-year period to $329 million over 10 years. On a present value basis, that's $266 million.
Director Raymond, sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah. That would represent a 24% reduction to the discretionary budget. An impact such as this will be challenging to address, and we will likely require fundamental changes to our present budgeting process. The city will meet this challenge in a deliberative manner. Mayor Young has been very proactive regarding preparing for Kerwin and has directed all city agencies as they prepare their fiscal '21 budgets to essentially prepare a two-year budget '21 and '22, to prioritize their services from highest to lowest, and to recommend reductions up to 5% over that two-year period. Additionally, the finance department is refreshing its 10-year plan to identify additional saving opportunities. The mayor and the city council will have significant decisions to make in the near term and the intermediate term to comply with whatever outcome comes from the Kerwin funding. You have to remember this is a multi-year plan. We're phasing this in over 10 years. Our presentation focused this evening would be on three areas. A historical perspective of city funding as it relates to maintenance of effort for the school system. Two, a comparison of city education funding levels with other jurisdictions. And three, budgetary impacts to the city as well as other fiscal constraints that are unique to Baltimore. In closing my remarks, let me emphasize again, the mayor supports education funding. With that said, there are strong concerns about the impact the proposed formula will have on the city's general fund budget. At this time, I'll introduce the Budget Director, Bob Seneme, to go through a brief PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll address whatever questions may arise.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Henry. And thank you to the chair and the members of the committee. My name is Bob Seneme, Budget Director. I wanted to run through a brief presentation. The purpose of this is just to get us grounded on some of the facts and just some of the history of what the city has done, has been able to do for the schools over the past decade or so, and then talk a little bit more, sorry, and then talk a little bit more about our readiness for Kerwin. So just to start, really, again, three topics, city's operating support for schools, the city's capital support for schools, and then our readiness for Kerwin in a bit more detail. So first things first, on the city's operating support for schools, I want to be clear that the way school funding is done in Maryland is that it's wealth equalized. So the poorer jurisdictions, the less wealthy jurisdictions, are asked to contribute less as a portion of their budget. So the, each of the local counties gets a figure from the state generally around January of each year called maintenance of effort, and that is the amount that the local jurisdiction is required to spend on the schools. If you look at this chart, historically, the dark blue are the amounts that we were required to contribute to the school district. The light blue are amounts that we voluntarily contributed above the maintenance of effort, and the gray areas on the sides are areas, are state mandates in addition to the maintenance of effort. So we want to be clear that there's really three phases to this, from fiscal 2001 to fiscal 2009. And those years, as the schools were losing enrollment, they had declining enrollment, the city was told that we could actually contribute less to the schools. We chose voluntarily to hold them harmless from those, from those declines, and that added to our base over that period of time. In fiscal '10, '11, and '12, the city met its MOE contribution requirement each year. There were other counties in Maryland, including Montgomery and including Anna Rundle, to name two big ones, that asked for waivers, that asked for waivers from the requirements that were granted those waivers. During that recessionary time, the city never asked for those, for that permission. We always contributed the amount. And then heading into the last three years, during the Bridge to Kerwin funding, the state requirement was that we spend $22 million, $20, and $20 over those three years, and that's the gray areas between fiscal '18 and '20. But the city also voluntarily committed more money of operating support above that. We, in total, we contributed $99 million. The state law required us to do $62. If you add up all of those pieces that we've done on top of the base MOE formulas, the city's actually contributing now nearly $90 million more than if we would have just followed the MOE funding formulas over that time. So I think that's an important point to make, that the city has done the best that it can within its limited, its limited tax base. Second thing to clarify is that, you know, we see a lot of comparisons of, you know, Baltimore City to other jurisdictions. And I think the comparisons as a percent of our own budget, we believe is problematic. And the reason for that is that there are some significant differences between the city's budget and other counties' budgets. And I'll name them real quickly, and they're in the bill report. One is that because the schools is technically a separate entity, we only show in our budget the local contribution to city schools. In other school districts' budget and other counties' budgets, they show both the local contribution and the state contribution as part of their budget. And so sometimes we see charts that show us as significantly lower than others, and that is misleading in some ways because of the structure of our, of our budget. Second is the way highway transportation money is distributed in the city. The city is responsible for all of the roads in the city to maintain those roads, excluding interstate highways. Most other jurisdictions don't have that requirement. So again, our operating budget is higher because of that money. And the third issue is that we choose to budget our solid waste disposal costs in the general fund. Other jurisdictions have enterprise funds, which are excluded sometimes from the calculations that you'll see for comparisons. And then fourth and finally, we have, the city is much more dependent on grant funds. So our operating budget includes money that comes from either federal, state, or private sources. It's not discretionary money. It's not money that we can give to the schools. It's money that's restricted for that purpose. So all those reasons make the percent of our budget comparisons, I think, a bit confusing and problematic. We think the better way to look at it, again, is because, because operating support for schools is wealth equalized and that the poorer jurisdictions get more state aid. What we showed here is on the left, we're ranking revenue sources for public schools from the perspective of the school district budget, and we're low. The school district only gets about 21% of their funding from the city, but that's not really an outlier when you look at other wealth compared to other jurisdictions. The order of highest to lowest in terms of who gets the most money from their local, their local county is similar to the order in wealth. We're low on wealth, so we contribute less amount to the schools, whereas the wealthier counties are by design meant to contribute more to the schools. On the, on the capital side of the, of the budget, so this is an area where the city has fallen short. And one of the reasons for that is if you look at the capital support from the state to local jurisdictions, it's essentially, it runs basically equal to enrollment. So capital funding from the state is not wealth equalized. That means that the city does not get more funding from the state because we are a less wealthy jurisdiction. If you notice, the first row, Baltimore City, we make up about 10% of the funding that comes from state for capital program. We're about 9% of the enrollment. Anna Rundle is 9% of the funding and 9% of the enrollment. They're pretty close. They match. In other words, the capital budget is distributed based on how many students there are. The city has not been able to provide more funding for capital because we don't have the capacity to do it. Many other jurisdictions have chosen to take money out of their budgets and contribute it for additional capital projects. The city just has not had the capacity to keep up on those, on those projects. And historically, one of the reasons for that is we lost highway user revenue during the last recession. And you might say, why does transportation money matter for schools? Well, when we lost capital funding through the Highway User Revenue Fund, what that meant was we went from being able to spend over $70 million a year on transportation capital projects to being able to spend zero on transportation capital projects. That put all of the city's capital budget requirements, including schools, into a very small debt capacity the city has, which has ranged from, ranged from $65 to $80 million per year. So schools competes against transportation projects, which should have come from here, which used to be a state source. It competes against general city facilities. It competes against recreation centers. It competes against police stations. It competes against IT modernization. All the capital needs of the city combined compete for that little narrow piece of money. In the fiscal '20 budget, we had $80 million of geo bond allocation. The city, the schools got $19 million of that. So they get about a quarter of what we've allocated traditionally each year, but we recognize that that is not nearly much enough for the facility issues that we have. In, in order to try to correct for some of that imbalance in the capital funding, of course, most here know about the 21st Century Schools Program that was passed in 2013. And over that time, the city has actually over contributed to the program. We've made additional contributions to the capital program beyond what was required. The dark blue on this slide shows what we were required to do by the law. The light blue are contributions above what was required by law. And the reason that worked out that way is because the city chose to dedicate three revenue sources directly to the capital program. It's the, all of the beverage tax container revenues, 10% of the casino lease revenues, and half of the table games revenues that are generated at the casino. The city chose to put all of them towards capital. And if they come in higher, all of that money goes into the goes into the Twenty-First Century Construction Program, and that has led to us actually being, contributing more than half of the proceeds over the first five years of the In terms of readiness for Kerwin, I think, you know, Henry hit on the key points, but, you know, we've done four things to prepare for Kerwin over the last couple of months, over the last couple of years. First off, we, in our fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty planning process, we directed any surplus money that we had to one-time capital needs, and that was on purpose. That was so that we did not create recurring commitments on the city's side that we would have to then pull back on. So I think we were largely successful in convincing the prior administration, going back to the Pew administration, to make sure that we stayed on track and put the money towards capital or save it in fund balance rather than create more recurring needs. Second, as folks here have probably heard me say, every time we have a meeting with either the city council or citizens or the mayor, agency heads, we keep on saying, Kerwin, Kerwin, Kerwin. So the last three years, if I've been in a meeting and you haven't heard me say Kerwin, that was an oversight. I mean, we've been telling everybody in this building that we need to be ready for this. Third, as Henry mentioned, we have done, as part of the planning process this year, we have given agencies targets, five percent reduction targets. These are pre-decisional. This is meant to help us gather the information and start to scrutinize agencies and see if there are areas where we can offset some of these new expected costs with savings with internal agencies. And then, of course, we're also in the process of refreshing our ten-year plan, so finance is very aggressive about adding our own options to the mix. We don't just wait for the agencies to submit what they have. We always offer up additional solutions. So I would just add two caveats to close. One is that it's not easy to come up with a significant amount of money. Sometimes it's easy for us to see the inefficiencies in city government or city agencies, but it's another thing to be able to coalesce around and get the savings and make sure that we get those savings. And sometimes those inefficiencies, we're nibbling around the edges of some of those agencies. It's a half million there, it's a couple hundred thousand here, and a million there. The dollar amounts that are being discussed are frankly enormous. I mean, two-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollars, even over the course of ten years, represents a quarter of our discretionary operating budget. So, you know, we are doing the best we can to prepare for this, but I don't want this body to be under any illusion that this is a massive challenge that the city will be facing, and it will likely lead to, you know, every option has to be on the table depending on what the number ends up being that the city has to contribute it, and we owe it to, you know, ourselves and the schools to look at all those options. But it will be a significant challenge, and we will not be able to just take operational efficiencies to come up with this money. This will require additional tough choices, we believe. So with that, I'll close, and we're happy to take any questions, either me or Henry about our comments.
Thank you, Seneme. Colleagues, we're now going to take questions from the council on both the presentation by finance as well as by the school system. President Scott.
Thank you, and I guess this is a joint one for Mr. Seneme, Director Raymond, and you, Dr. Santelisis, but starting with, I guess, Mr. Seneme would be best asked of you. I think that we all are appreciative of the mayor's twenty-five million dollar commitment to schools for the next fiscal year. Can you guys explain to us where that will come from?
Yeah, President Scott, it will be part of the fiscal twenty-one budget. The specific identification of the specific funds has not been identified yet. We're very early in the twenty-one, excuse me, we're very early in the twenty-one planning process, but the commitment has been made and the commitment will be fulfilled.
Okay, so a follow-up to that, Director Raymond. So, for example, as an agency head, I received the mayor's letter, and you know that the city council is going to meet that, if not try to exceed that in order to more properly fund our schools. Can you, based on the letter that was sent, can you, one, walk us through, you know, what you're expecting to see from other agencies, but also, what potential savings have been identified? Have we identified any new sources of revenue? Have we considered any targeted service cuts for cost savings? And then also, one of the big issues for me with this is that, when you talk about fully funding our schools, what you're really talking about is making sure we are investing in children and our families. And for me, we can't say that we're going to be fully investing in our children and our families and then expect Wreckin' Parks to take a five percent cut, because that's the definition of Robin Peter to pay Paul. They have similar mission. Have we also considered how we could consider other agencies taking a bigger burden? Those, we know that agencies like Wreckin' Parks are at their bare bones to begin with, right? Where other agencies, many of them, when you know who they are, have lots of fat that can be definitely trimmed. Can you walk us through that, and then I have a follow-up for that?
Essentially, all agencies receive the same instructions. All agencies are, have been directed to prepare a two-year plan for twenty-one and twenty-two to prioritize all of their services from highest to lowest, and to identify up to five percent of reductions and agency efficiencies. Those proposals and plans are due December the thirteenth. During January, February, those plans will be reviewed. Decisions will be made regarding which of those recommendations should be accepted, which ones should not be accepted, what types of adjustments should be made between agencies. Getting to your point, President Scott, some agencies may take more reduction than other agencies, depending on which of those proposals make the best sense.
Thank you, Director. I want to, Mr. Seneme, I want to talk about the difference between, you know, voluntary support, the mandated support, the extra support that we give the schools in the bridge to Kerwin for a little bit. Can you, you had a graph, and I know that, Dr. Santelisis, you had a list of that information. Can you walk through, from your standpoint, Mr. Seneme, what that is? Tell us so that we can hear the dollar amounts and what we're actually paying for in additional voluntary support first.
Sure. So in that three-year bridge funding from fiscal eighteen to fiscal twenty, what was in the law was that the city would have to provide sixty-two million dollars over the three years, and that ten million of that would end up as recurring MOE costs. What we ended up doing, and what was announced at very early stages, this is again going back to the last administration, was we would do ninety million plus. We ended up doing ninety-nine over those three years. So the numbers over those three years, they grew. In the first year, let me just find it in my notes here, I have the actual numbers. So in the first year, we provided twenty-five point four, second year, thirty-five point three, and in the third year, thirty-eight point five. So in the final year of the bridge funding agreement, we're providing about thirteen million dollars of maintenance of effort, which will have to continue beyond, and we're providing twenty-five million dollars of in-kind services.
What are those in-kind services?
So in-kind services is additional support for school health and support for risk management. So on school health, prior to the bridge funding agreement, we had a memorandum of understanding between the schools about how those costs would be split. So we're providing a greater share of those costs now. And on risk management, traditionally, what we've done is we've billed the schools for their share of risk management, being like workers' compensation claims, for example. So during this last year, we've waived most of those costs. So that is a burden on the city. That is a cost that we have to bear by waiving those. And the last year is about thirteen of MOE and twenty-five of in-kind services.
So how much, you said workers' comp, we can see that, and you said school nurses. How much have we been paying for school nurses?
Twelve million and thirteen million.
So twenty-five million, to be exact.
Yeah, about twenty-five million total.
So to go to Dr. Santelisis's presentation, so we have the thirteen million for workers' comp, the three million bridge that the council worked out with the previous administration, and you're now saying that we also have twelve million in nurses' costs that are going to go away, right? Are you, my understanding, go ahead.
Yeah, so the twenty-five million dollars that was announced was meant to basically extend that for another year. Now, to be clear, we've never had a recurring funding source for the, because it was bridge funding. We took it out of fund balance. So the mayor has committed to moving that out for one year because the Kerwin recommendations don't start until fiscal twenty-two, whereas when this all started, we thought it was twenty-one. So we're extending those in-kind services essentially, but I just have to be clear, we don't have a recurring funding source for even the in-kind services on top of these additional costs which might come out of the Kerwin legislation.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Seneme, but my understanding is that the state passed legislation, I think it was Senate Bill ten-thirty last year, that states a county that provides a school nurse, school health services, or community school service from funds outside of those made in, inside the fiscal year twenty-nineteen, local proceeding to the county board should continue to provide that, at least the same resources to eligible school in fiscal years twenty and twenty-one. So that part's not optional.
Yeah, we understand that, but we don't have a recurring funding source for it at this point.
So the follow-up to that is, is that, so will the twenty-five million dollars, will that be twenty-five million in addition to replacing this twenty-five million dollars? Or is this twenty-five million dollar commitment to replace stuff that we were already paying for?
No, the twenty-five was intended to extend for another year the things that we're doing in fiscal twenty. Beyond that, we do not have a funding source for it.
But we don't know how we're going to do it yet.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
I'm done for now, Mr. Chair. I'll share the wealth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is still to finance. I just want to reiterate the president's point around equity. A five percent across-the-board cut to every agency does not land the same when we talk about priorities. And I see you shaking your head, is that not a correct statement, or?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
It was mentioned by Director Raymond that each agency is going to be asked to take a five percent, identify, self-identify five percent in cuts. And when we talk about the fiscal impact that that has on an agency like Wreckin' Parks, which serves our young people and acts as a supplement to out-of-school time and additional programming that when the schools close, our young people are relying on, that's a huge impact compared to what we know, the police department, which is one of the highest in the country, over five-hundred million dollars. A five percent cut does not have the same impact on their operations, nor does it seem to, there seems to be some misalignment here when giving those instructions out across the board without a lens of equity and impact. Can you speak to where that guidance came from?
Yeah, the guidance came from me as finance director. The five percent reduction is a starting point. What we're trying to do is, working with the agencies, gain an understanding of what they believe their best services are, the least services. The Kerwin funding, as we understand it right now, one hundred and thirty-eight million in year one, growing to three hundred and thirty million over ten years, is an astronomical level of funding. So what we're trying to do, being proactive right now, eighteen months away from when the funding needs to be in place, July one of twenty-one, we're taking the five percent reduction. We're not going to accept every recommendation that the agencies offer. We know that some of the recommendations offered will not be doable or not viable, perhaps don't make the best sense, and we will recalibrate once we see what's being proposed. Because again, July one of twenty-one, we're trying to start now so we can do a good job of planning, determine what won't be funded, what should be funding. Certain agencies may contribute more than five percent.
Okay, but again, I would hope that you'd reconsider that. When, again, when we talk about Wreckin' Parks, which has approximately a sixty-million-dollar budget, a five percent cut makes a huge impact on their ability to serve our young people compared to a department like Public Works or Transportation. Those things aren't felt. And the other thing that I throw out there is something to consider, is that you said that the agencies are allowed to develop their own set of priorities. I would hope that you would provide additional guidance when we talk about the prioritization process, and any cuts should be based on data, should be based on impact and outcomes, not solely at the discretion of an agency head, but in looking through what are the outcomes that will result from those cuts and where they're headed. And my hope is that the administration would align those cuts and recommendations based on the mayor's priorities, right? The budget is the most important prioritization document that we passed in City Hall, and my hope is that that should reflect what we know from this administration, one that has pushed out the youth fund and advocated for increases for school funding. I mean, the mayor has led on that. My hope is that the things that we know serve and impact the lives of young people, which is why we're here tonight, are given the highest priority when we talk about funding for city schools.
So in the instructions that go out, agencies are also asked to produce performance information, some of the measures that are published each year in the book. So when that information comes back, it's definitely viewed in the context of what is the impact and what is the result that we're trying to buy with those dollars. So that is definitely going to be part of the context and part of the decision-making process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question, the finance report calls out four key differences between the education spending as a percentage for the city as compared to the other jurisdictions. If those four differences were a part of the way that we reflect our percentage, how would that adjust? What would be our, what would be the percentage based upon incorporating these differences?
Yeah, so if you look at the DLS report, there's a DLS report that shows percent of city's budget as a, I'm sorry, percent of contribution to schools as a percent of total operating budget, and compares among counties. Those differences, we think, would make a four or five percent difference. Right now, it shows fourteen percent. We did the math internally and just kind of took those things and changed them. It would add some percentage. It wouldn't make us equal to those other counties, nor should it. It shouldn't make us equal to Howard County or even Prince George's County, for example. Those counties are wealthier than us. Not significantly more, but they are wealthier than us. So it would make a bit of a difference, and we just wanted to highlight that because sometimes the comparisons we see, I think, paint the city in a bit of an unfair light, especially in consideration of the things we've done on the capital program in Twenty-First Century Schools and the voluntary contributions we've made to MOE over many years.
Yeah, I mean, I think that no matter how slight the increase is, I think it's important to reflect, because even on the state level, oftentimes, the opposition is, you know, the city doesn't do, even from those individuals who represent Baltimore, that the city doesn't do its fair share of contributing to the school system. So if there is some discrepancy in the way that it's measured, we should at least be able, it doesn't take away from the fact that we need to contribute more. I'm not saying that at all, but we should be able to reflect, you know, those discrepancies.
Yeah, we agree with that, and that's just something that you just wanted to correct, that notion. We've been working with DLS. I mean, DLS does a pretty good job of trying to equalize across jurisdictions. There are some differences. In this case, the ones I've listed are pretty key differences that are in the tens of millions or even the hundreds of millions of dollars. So if you do make those differences, it can make a small difference. So we're going to work with them to try to come up with an agreed-upon number, just we're all on the same page. But again, going back to that first point, you know, operational funding for schools is supposed to be wealth equalized. The wealthier counties pay more.
Right.
The poorer jurisdictions pay less. So even after doing that, we should be lower than those other counties. I think that's a very important point.
There's been a lot of discussion about budget cuts, and clearly, everyone's going to have to tighten their belts to make certain that we make the contributions that we need to make. And you already, in the report, you already talked about that Baltimore has the highest tax effort on our constituents as opposed to surrounding jurisdictions. So what, can you speak to what other measures are being considered that are revenue generating that potentially could be used to support, you know, our school system?
Yeah, so the reason we showed the tax effort on the slide and talked about it in the report is because we have to acknowledge that going into this conversation, we already are taxing our residents, if you look at the DLS data, at fifty percent more than any other jurisdiction, or fifty percent more than the statewide average. So revenue, you know, it's, we just have to be clear that it's not our first option to look at revenue because we already have a high burden, but we have to keep everything on the table. We'll look at all options, but it's premature to talk about specific options now on the revenue side because that's not our first default option for this.
Right, and I'm just trying to make certain that everything's on the table that we're looking at. I mean, even if we travel up the road to Philadelphia, they use creative ways to support their Wreckin' Parks system. So just saying that we've got to really start looking around, not only, because we can only cut but so much. So we've got to identify other streams. to identify other streams to really be able to address this in a way that we hope.
We clearly agree that everything is going to be on the table.
I have another one, but I know it's on me too.
Councilman Castella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The bridge-to-gap funding that you laid out, Bob, the $99 million, we had originally committed, I think, 90, and if I'm not mistaken, the state had also committed 90 over a three-year period?
Yeah, the state, the state and the city both committed about the same.
It was $180 total over a three-year period. What is the amount of funding required for next year for bridge to gap, for fiscal '21? Because Kerwin is not going to be implemented and funded in time for fiscal '21.
Yeah, so, coming out of the bridge to Kerwin legislation, the legislation says that of the bridge funding, we had to maintain at least 10 on a going basis. So, that will be built in, and then the mayor had made the commitment for $25 million, which is meant to cover essentially the in-kind services for another year. And then beyond that, we're back to square one.
So, in total, it would be 35?
So, the legislation says you have to continue at least $10 million of MOE beyond, so we've planned around that already, even during the three-year period.
And that's in perpetu, is that in perpetuity or until Kerwin?
Yes, yeah, that's part of maintenance of effort.
Okay, so, that's the 10, and then the 25 that the mayor committed?
Right.
Is the 25 in in-kind services?
Right. And then there was the 3 million that was added for that three-year period. We're still working with MSD to figure out whether that's part of the base or whether that's not part of the base going forward.
That was the 3 million from the budget negotiations in '17?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're uncertain if we have to contribute that?
Yeah, it's where, there's, we've been talking with MSD to try to figure out whether that is part of the recurring cost. There was a disagreement, a technical disagreement, so we're working with them to try to get clarity on whether that will be part of the base going forward. The legislation said 10, but this 3 is also under consideration.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, these are just quick fire, and I'll be done in 60 seconds. The current MOE is 280?
About, it's, yeah, 278, 278 was the number in the 20 budget.
And then the 3 million would make it the 281?
No, the 3 was actually part of the number.
Would bring it back down to 275?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out, whether that has to be maintained going forward.
Okay, and finally, our last question, who makes that final determination? Is that MSD or is that?
MSD, yep.
Okay, so, and if there's, if there's a further disagreement, I assume that's resolved by the Attorney General for the state?
I'm not sure. They allow us to, they allow us to appeal it, and then, I don't know who makes that.
It's under review by MSD, and the city will abide by MSD's decision.
Whatever MSD says, so there won't be a conflict.
The issue is, it's technical clarification. Once MSD provides the technical clarification, whichever way it goes, the city will abide by.
Excellent.
We're just seeking the resolution to the clarification.
So, there's no intention to challenge MSD's ruling on the matter? And lastly, do we know when we expect that ruling from MSD?
I would say soon.
Because I thought we were, I thought we were dealing with, this is no one in particular's fault, but I thought we were dealing with this issue last year during the budget process of trying to determine whether or not.
No.
Perhaps I'm mistaken.
This issue came about this fall.
Okay.
Yeah, and to answer your question about when do we expect MSD to provide an answer, I would say very soon.
Before the budget's submitted?
In January.
Before the budget's submitted for fiscal.
Oh, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman President Scott.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess first, this is really for my colleagues, since it seems that there was a little, it's a little unclear about the council $3 million commitment. Mr. Budget Chair, let me just say for the record that we're going to make that a budget priority again this year, that we fight to keep that no matter what happens. So, we just set that in before the budget even comes to us. Director Sinema, can you, and Director Raymond, have we considered doing other revenue-changing funds? For example, if we, if money could be raised, if we turn trash collection into a utility fund? And also, what would you guys consider renegotiating? How much of DPW's utility funds are returned to the general funds? Like, what would be the impact from going from 5% to 10%?
So, on the, on the, creating an enterprise fund for the utility, that has been discussed internally over many years, the way it was originally viewed was that if you took those costs out of the general fund and put them in an enterprise fund, that you would lower the property tax rate and then charge people directly for trash collection. That's how most other, that's how most other jurisdictions handle that. Now, it could be a, if you took the cost out of the general fund and charged for them but didn't cut property taxes, that's a way to save money, but you'd be, it's essentially adding a fee to somebody, to a resident. I'm sorry, the second part of your question?
Second was, would you consider renegotiating how much of DPW's utility funds are returned to the general fund? Like, what the impact would be from going from 5% to 10%? And for the law department, what will be required to do that?
Yeah, I think that's something we would consider. We do have an agreement. It's a 6% of overhead today, so that would be something that we could, we would consider.
And what is that? Do you have the, if you don't have the number, like dollar amount, I know that you know the budget by the back of your hand, but not like that. What would be, what is 6%?
The totals, the total for all the enterprise funds, which would be the water utility, wastewater utility, stormwater, and the conduit enterprise fund, totals about $14 million that we get to the general fund for overhead.
Thank you. And then, a follow-up, Mr. Sinema, you, you mentioned in your, in your report, and I just want to see if this is still the thought of the director and yourself, you mentioned in your report about how you consistently, and I know you've preached this for every single year that I've been in city government, and most importantly, the last few, when we have surpluses, about not committing surpluses to ongoing costs. So, that is still the way that the Finance Department wants the city to operate, correct? And that you guys believe that one-time surplus should go towards capital projects or other things like that?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Santalisis, a question, a question for you to give those gentlemen a break for a second. On Slide 5 of your presentation, you said that a school of 600 students would have received an additional $2.4 million if properly funded. What would that look like in a school building and in a classroom? What impact would that funding have had on opportunity and learning incomes?
Sure, so, some of what I described orally, I reference back. So, for example, we were at Marie G. Ferring today. They have an increased number of ELL students that are coming in daily, so $2.4 million there might actually look like additional ESOL supports. So, for example, they have, they have young people who have just arrived, who've never been in school before. $2.4 million actually provides those young people with a smaller setting to get used to school before they transition into a larger environment. It also looks like schools that we know now, as I've said before, make decisions about will they have an art teacher or a music teacher, or leaves kids at only half a year of art or a half a year of music. It would allow them to actually, what I call true up, which would be to have a full year of each of those. Another example would be at the middle grades. We have lots of young people. Our world language programs are not where they need to be, quite frankly. They're either partial, you know, you might have it for half a year, for three years of middle school. It would, so it would allow our young people to actually hit proficiency by having more exposure that way. It would mean more intramural sports, which, one of the things that we find, and I tell everybody, we have one, I think we have the best athletic director in the state, if not the.
Agreed.
Leesron Seaboard, yes. And she works miracles, frankly, but it would mean, for example, that more of our middle grades would be able to field actual middle school-level sports more expanded. It would also mean that more of our young people would get instrumental music. So, right now, a lot of our high schools every year hold their breath to see whether they can field a full, full band at the high school level. So, it would mean additional instrumental music for kids. It would also mean, I was talking, I was meeting actually with Commissioner DeRosa this, earlier today, and we were talking about mental health supports for young people. So, it would mean in schools where we might have a half-time school psychologist, we'd actually be able to have a full-time school psychologist. It would mean that we would be able to have more. One of the things we talked about with her was having more group mentoring sessions so that not every young person needs to have a one-on-one appointment with a psychologist. A lot of them, if they are in kind of a, for lack of a better term, group therapy, we'd be able to provide some of those other supports. So, it really is, it's a full range, and it's a full range. It, I think, the, the impact at the basic level is that we wouldn't be asking school leaders and teachers to make decisions about things that should be a given for the education of our young people. And you know, because I've stood before this body before and said that I will never have a minimalist approach to the education of young people in Baltimore City. And so, what we are talking about is actually what should be part of a regular student's education. Young people should be able to play an instrument before they reach eighth grade. Young people should be able to know that they are going to be able to have, you know, if they love art, that they're going to be able to have more than two art classes. I always remember the high school student, when I was at Patterson, I don't normally say the high school, who said to me, "Look, I love art. I want to do art. I'm fine doing your math class, but my school only has three art classes." And so, for a high school student who has a passion for art, to not go to, say, a Baltimore School of Arts, it shouldn't be that, that in order to fulfill your love for art, you have to go to one or two high schools in the city. It should be that whatever high school you go to, you can fulfill your passions. And we have young people in this city who are engaging in behaviors that then become criminalized because they have not had the opportunity to discover their passions. When young people discover what they are good at, they do not engage en masse in some of the behaviors that we see. They are doing that because we have not nurtured them to understand who they are, to feel confident. We have kids right now who, if we could get reading tutors earlier for them, in their career, they would be reading at the end of second grade, and so we would not have to have the remediation, and we would not have the low literacy rates that everybody in this room knows characterizes incarcerated individuals. So, when we talk about what $2.4 million buys, it buys an education that ensures that young people actually come out with the skills that they're supposed to have, and it ensures that they have exposure to what we name enrichment, but actually is not enrichment, not in the wealthiest state in the nation. It is shameful that I meet 65-year-old, 70-year-old people who are residents of this city who tell me that they were, they learned French in Baltimore City public schools, and it wasn't because they tested into some specialized program. It was because they went to their neighborhood high school, they were able to have a world language program, and they came out being able to speak another language. And so, I think, really, the bottom line for me is, if we are going to be serious about curbing, right, a lot of, again, the behaviors that we are now policing, that we are now medicating, that we are now trying to redirect, then we have to be real about what we know to be true. And that is what we expose young people to. What they are able to find in themselves has a lot to do with, right, what comes out at the other end. And I say this to everybody, we have the young people that we have educated and we have raised. And so, to go around talking about how broken they are, how they don't do this or that, I am old school. I believe adults are responsible for setting the conditions for a generation of young people. We are putting a burden on 12-year-olds and 8-year-olds that they were frankly never designed to bear. That is our job. We're supposed to do that, and instead, they got to come up here on a school night, line chairs. Joshua Lynn is here. Are you still here, Joshua? Right, so Joshua's here. So, we got kids coming out, and yes, I love student voice, and I think student voice is wonderful, but I think as adults, we have to be adults. They should not, Joshua should not have to be here tonight, wondering about school funding. He should be home studying for whatever test he's going to tell me he's stressed out about tomorrow. And so, that, that's what $2.4 million buys. That's what it buys.
Thank you, man. Two more questions. Mr. Chair, two more questions, one for Dr. Santalisis and one for Director Raymond and Mr. Sinema. Dr. Santalisis, I know you talked about it briefly, and you can merge the two. We hear this consistent, I don't want to say conversation, we can hear these consistent ill-fated talking points about how wasteful the district is, and how bloated North Avenue is, and how the system needs to be audited. Can you talk about, and root everyone in the reality which actually exists for our city's school system? And I think that some people, elected officials of the highest capacity, our governor in particular, need to hear that and understand that city schools is not an agency with a lot of waste. There's not an agency, and really, and for Mr. Sinema and the folks from the mayor's office, and Mr. Raymond, you know that every other week, I have to ask a city agency why they haven't corrected some, something that was on their previous audit, right, that leads to hundreds of thousands of dollars of waste or inefficiencies. But reading the school system's audit, I don't see that. And when we, if we're, when we're talking about trying to make sure that we're fully funding our schools, I think it's important for us to set the record straight about how the money's being spent in the first place.
Sure, and I know that you have council president, other speakers who are, including Jess Gardner, who's a specialist in school funding, so I'll also let her paint some of that. But I will say this, and again, maybe because I got a cold, and maybe because I came from a great break, but I think one of the things that we have to be honest and say is that those terms are based out of a historical precedent, right? People use that as a distractor. It is a distractor because, if you notice, everybody liked to say we were bloated, until it came out that we have the small, we spend the smallest amount, as we noted in the chart, on central funding, on non-instructional funding, right? We're tied for the lowest in the state. Now, you can continue to say, because I realize that we live in an echo chamber now, where people feel like if they just say untruth over and over and over again and sprinkle dust, it becomes magic. But the reality is that the data shows, we went back and worked on it, and the sun picked it up and verified it as well, that we are not overspending. We actually spend the smallest amount in terms of audits. Look, Mary Ann can, can, can talk about that. We have, that's why we put it on the slide, our CFO, sorry, Mary, I didn't mean to be disrespectful, but our CFO can come up and talk about the fact that when we have audit findings, Mary Ann runs central. We know when we have audits, we have more audits than probably any other agency I have ever worked for. And I think part of what we also have to match with that is, in addition to the audit findings, the fact that we have been proactive in my administration in seeking out outside eyes. We have not been insular. So, when we had issues with heating, when we had issues with air conditioning, we called in experts from the private and the public sector. We didn't close our doors. They came in. We said, "Tell us how we can be better. Tell us how we can be more efficient." And one of the things they did was they actually walked with us. And what you have to note is that people who fire those kind of missives, those are folks who won't walk in our buildings. Those are folks who don't know what it looks like every day. The people who actually walked with us, who walked with my chief operating officer and her team, what they actually came out saying, and these are some of the biggest names in construction and maintenance, and Don Manniken was here earlier, is he still here? They will tell you they walked with us, and yes, they found places that we can improve. Every major organization can improve, and I'm not saying that we can't, but what they really could, you know what the refrain was? "We don't know how you do what you do with the little bit you have." So, so, part of this is really about how do we actually elevate what are the facts? So part of this is really about how do we actually elevate what are the facts? Because every single time we come back to what the data actually says, it disproves what other folks are saying. Yes, do we need to improve? I've never worked in an organization, private, public, or nonprofit, and I have led all three, so don't get it twisted. They have all had areas where they can be more efficient and that we have had to improve. But in this case, each and every time an issue surfaces, we actually ask people to come in, do a deep dive, and every single time we find places to improve, and there is no mass mismanagement that is found. But it is convenient in a majority city with this demographics to scream mismanagement. And I am a student of history, so I am not fooled. And if you look throughout history, whenever you want to deem a people or a community unworthy of investment, you immediately go after their competency to lead and to run things. This is not a new narrative, which is why I'm not troubled by it. This has happened, and we could go down a list, and y'all don't have time. But I think what we need to do is we need to major in being schooled in what is the actual result that is being yielded. So yes, that's where I am on that.
Thank you. Last one, President Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Sanz Elisis, for that perfect response.
Yeah. This is my last question for Director Raymond and Mr. Sineme. It's a double, dual question. One, have we considered using outside analysts to analyze city services and make recommendations for efficiencies and cost savings? We do that all the time. And then also, have you guys spoken about what, we don't know, the uncertainty of the economy and whether a recession could hurt us? And let me also, for the record, state that we, it was mentioned earlier, and Sineme, you know that I love you, that we overspent or overgave to our capital funding. You can't overgive to an organization or a school system that has the capital funding needs that the city school system faces. And we know that time and time again, we're here, when I was on the budget committee, balancing the city's budget with funds that you have to find out of thin air because agencies ran over their budget with impunity. And now they have to know that those days are gone because all that money they used to waste now has to go to the school system. Thank you for that, and if you could answer those two questions.
Sure. On the first question about using outside help, we do and we will. As you know, the Finance Department has retained a consultant for our 10-year plan refresh. Over the last decade, the city has been extraordinarily aggressive about attacking some financial issues. We reformed our F and P pension system, we reformed our civilian pension system, we reformed our health benefit system, we changed our fire schedule and went down hundreds of positions on fire. All those things had a significant pushback from different corners of this building or different constituents, but we were very focused on doing that, and we will continue to do that. The refresh that we're going through now is to take the next step and to see what else is still out there. So we agree with that, and we have been aggressive on that. And some of the ideas that you hear when we're in hearings on things like the police department or fire, things that we see that we think are inefficiencies or can be done better, sometimes comes from our work with those outside groups that helps us to highlight those issues. So on the second question, I think the point you make is an important one. We just got out of a decade where we have had a growing economy, and we're probably at the peak of that expansion. And again, we just got out of a decade where we made very aggressive financial reforms. You can't count on those things coming together again over the course of the next decade. So I think, you know, on top of just the concern we have for the magnitude of the number that's out there, the city is still in a very tenuous financial position, and we, you know, we just have to keep that in mind during these discussions, that we're not coming from a position of strength. We have weaknesses, and our financial position is not strong in that context, so.
Thank you. You know that that means I want to have a discussion about certain agencies' horses this upcoming summer.
Be happy to have that discussion.
Thanks, President. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilwoman Vice Chair Clark.
I just, I just want to talk to finance for a moment about what your approach. We fully, I mean, I certainly fully support the addition of, you know, the 25 million and whatever it takes for us to have the kind of school system that our kids deserve, and that's many, hundreds of millions of dollars away. And, but thanks to the school system already for educating so many of my children, grandchildren, and they are all doing very well, so. And I know there's no, I know there's not the kind of personnel stuck in headquarters that maybe there was at one time. It's looking pretty, it's sparse there, and, but very great, very good people, very talented and dedicated people, and thank you for that, and thank you for the spirit of the place. But I just want to talk about, I just want to kind of enlarge the subject for one minute. You're talking about getting ready, and you're finance people, so that's what you do. You're talking about getting ready for Kerwin and for the needs, and for sort of putting the word out to all the agencies to come back with an idea of a 5% cut agency budget. I've been sitting in this new, this city council, the one that started in 2016, we've all been here three years together. I would say that it has been fairly remarkable, well, just prior to this term, there was the Children and Youth Fund, a percentage of revenue coming in, and I think it's, I mean, it was great. It's great. We certainly want to continue that because it's getting to a lot of groups, and more and more, I hope, all the time, who are marginalized by, you know, by big funders, but who have, who have projects that are at the grassroots level where kids live and where they will participate and can benefit. We have other, we have other initiatives that are forced upon us or because of the progressive nation, nature of this council. So, for example, we're coming up against zero waste, and we're going to need some expansions in solid waste, which isn't supported and shouldn't be. I mean, please do not even think about charging for trash in my lifetime, okay? Because I can't, my, I don't want to hear the roar. But basically, we, there are a lot of good things, like the Children and Youth Fund. There's a fair campaign fund making its way through this council that deserves to talk about equity, deserves to have the funding that everybody knows it's going to need. This is not, I'm not lobbying. There are, so we have to expand in order to eliminate landfills eventually, but incinerators right away, we got to do something with composting. It's the obvious thing to do citywide, first with centers and then citywide, because it's 25% of the waste every week. And so if we do something with that part of our waste, the food, et cetera, we're already only 75% trying to bury stuff, and we know what to do with a lot of the rest of that. That costs money in order to get good environmental health. And I'm just mentioning a couple of the things that this very progressive council, which I'm so proud to be a member of, has done. And so when you are looking at cuts to existing agencies and programs, I just want to say there are, there are programs that have been signed by the mayor, approved by this council, that have their cost, that must be an integral part of the mix, and that I think it's very important that we, as a council, our budget committee, participate with finance in putting together a council budget. I'd like to see this council do that so that we're not just trying to add, 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 but that you see that we're part of the full cooperation of all the new costs from the new legislation that we have to have in order for equity, in order for a cleaner environment, in order for a better city. So I guess I'd like to propose to our president and our budget person that we should more actively engage with finance in putting together a budget. Now, the mayor still, the mayor still has the authority through the Board of Estimates to actually put the budget in, but I would like us to be part, not just trying to slap on other parts of a budget that's already coming to us, but having been part of the discussion of the wholeness of the budget with the extra money going to education, but not neglecting some of the newer things that are coming on that cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, city schools. Thank you, budget. I did just want to briefly say, appreciate the presentation. Two quick concerns. Mr. Sineme, a few things that you said, that the budget is the best it can be within our limited tax base, and that we're not coming from a position of strength. And I know what you meant. I do want to challenge that, though. Have we, as we're thinking about our projections and the possibility of recession, have we also considered, though, that when folks leave our city, they generally do so for two reasons, and that is safety in schools? If we are looking to increase our tax base, which is critical to our long-term stability and growth and vibrancy as a city, have we done any projections? Have we done any fiscal analysis in how adding more to our schools could actually bring more tax base? Just like, and I know some folks are going to talk about this later, but Massachusetts made a major investment in their school system. They saw growth, they saw more people moving there, their business climate improved dramatically. So have we done any sort of projections and analysis on how this could actually make our fiscal climate healthier?
So to answer that question, I think it's, we can't count on that. So it's possible that that could happen over time if we make a huge investment, that there will be additional people that will want to be here, but we can't count, we have to be realistic. We can't count on that going forward. I can tell you that in the last decade, when we started our planning process in each of those fiscal years, there was only two times out of the last 10 that when we did our original projection, that the cost, the increase in just year-to-year revenue growth covered the cost of just maintaining our existing services. So schools mentioned that before, that each year the cost of providing services grows, we give cost of living adjustments, there's inflation. And so I just want to throw some caution to the wind because we have a hard enough time here maintaining the current service levels, and there were many years, fiscal 19 and fiscal 20 were anomalies. The decade before that, we started every year having to make trims just to continue to do what we already do. So can we use that as part of our projection? It's something we're aware of and we consider, but we definitely can't count on it on a year-to-year basis.
Understood. I will just simply say, both anecdotally, and I think this is borne out, that when folks choose to leave our city, it is, those are the two that come up almost every single time. And so if we want to stem the tide, I think this is an absolutely critical investment so that our city will be in a position of strength. Councilman Castile.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for the CFO at city schools, or Dr. Sanz Elisis, whomever. I wanted to go back to pages 10 and 11 in your presentation on fund balance, and the second slide on fund balance assigned. We asked some questions about this at the last quarterly budget hearing, and I'm not sure I fully understand this, so perhaps you can walk me through it again. On page, on slide 10, there's 127 million 347 for assigned fund balance. I understand what that is, and we can get to that in a moment. I want to talk about what total committed is.
Does this work?
Yes.
The 20 million is the amount of money that we were required to set aside after the deficit in 2004 and '05, when we had trouble meeting payroll and we needed to borrow money to make payroll. They said as a result of that, we were going to put some money aside so that will never happen again. And that's what this 20 million was. We were required, I believe in FY 2005 and 2006, to set 10 million aside each year and to place it in a place where it can only be touched by a, you know, a board action. That's what the 20 million is for.
Got it. So that was, that was required by the General Assembly?
I don't think so. It was the board, well, and also it was, I'm sorry, Dwan might have a little more historical context on that, but it also came out in that report. Remember, the financial recovery report that went to the board, and we received input from other, and the city was part of that.
Which, which report is that?
I can send you a copy of it.
Yeah. And Melissa and I have been emailing throughout the hearing if you could just have her send me a copy of that. But, because I guess I'm a bit confused as to whether or not, what the authority of that commitment is, and whether or not that that's really required. I don't know very, may well be based on your explanation, but that's where I was coming from with that question.
Well, and also, for us to be able to record it as committed, it has to meet certain accounting criteria as well. So this has also been run past our auditors, but why don't we send you a copy of the report first?
That'd be great. Thank you.
And then if there's follow-up questions, we can.
On to the, follow-up to that, the 36 million 258,000. So total unassigned in fund balance, is it safe to say that you're treating that line item similar to how we might treat a rainy day fund?
That money is placed there by another board policy that requires us to have a target amount of 3% to 5% of the next year's general fund budget to hold for unknown things that could come up, you know, contingencies during the year. And if we do not have a minimum of 3%, then we have to have a plan to get to 3% by board policy.
Okay, and I'm just.
We're just a little bit above 3% now. I think we're at like 3.1%, something like that.
So essentially, you have 56.3 million that's set aside by board policy?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the second slide.
Sorry, and just another question. For us to use any of the money in fund balance, we have to go to the board and request approval to do so.
Understood, but that's similar to your normal budget process. When you set your budget each year, you're required to get board approval for that, correct?
Okay, but once the money's in fund balance, we also go to the board separately and ask for permission to use it as it has been set aside.
And Mr. Chair, if you'd indulge me, it's two more quick rapid fire, I'll be done in 60 seconds. Thank you. Can you walk me through what these, these last two line items on slide 11 are? FY 2020 adopted budget, other financing services, is that debt service for 22 million?
No, the 22 million was what was included in our FY 20 budget as approved by the board to make revenue equal expenditures, which we have to have a balanced budget. We needed to use this 20 million to.
No, 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 I'm on the, I'm on the page 11, the second last item.
Page 11.
FY 2020 adopted budget, other financing services.
It should be sources. I'm sorry, it shouldn't be services. It should be other financing sources.
Understood. And then lastly, encumbrances of 37 million and change?
The 37 million is the amount of the purchase orders that we would have had approved through our normal process, and as we close the year out, we don't always get the invoices right away, you know, so we record any invoices that we have. But the purchase orders, when we get board authority to issue purchase orders, and we do, those people have a right do, those people have a right to perform the services and then bill us for it. So this would be basically for unbilled services that, for which purchase orders had been created.
And that's not payroll, that's?
No, 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 those are all contractual services.
Can you give me a general breakdown, when you follow up with the other report, as to how that $37 million breaks down?
Certainly.
Because that seems like a lot for contractual encumbrances.
Certainly.
And you don't have a rainy day fund in addition to this, correct? There's no.
This is everything.
There's no reserve funds, there's no additional accounts?
This is, this is it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gentlemen, real quick, what's in the city's fund balance? One moment.
So we have a, we have a rainy day fund. The target is about, is 8% of our operating budget. It's about $140 million in, in that fund. That is restricted. It can only be used for post-budget adoption emergencies, so we can't take money out of that to plan for next year's budget. We also have about $100 million in our assigned fund balance, and we've set it aside for two things. FNP pension liability, which we've talked about in some of our, our budget hearings. We still have a potential liability for that. That case, even though it's been decided by the judge, we don't know what the final payout will be. And something we also mentioned at the closeout hearing is we have, we're experiencing liabilities from police cases, some of which are decades old. You might have read in the news that we have had to settle some cases that go back 20, 30 years. We also lost a jury trial that's being appealed, so we have set money aside for police legal liability. Not only the historic cases, but with the GTTF case, there are cases that are being thrown out that we think will come, and some of those could be the responsibility of the city.
Thank you. And last question, my colleague from the 11th put in a resolution to take a look at the city's pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement with some of the institutions. I know some of the folks in the public feel that there are entities in town that have not historically paid their fair share. Are we considering changing the terms of the pilot? Have we thought about that as an additional revenue source?
That's an option, but at the moment, the agreement we have is signed through, I believe, 2026. So it is something that we could, we will look at, that it's on our list of options, and we'll definitely respond in more detail at that hearing when the time comes.
Yeah, the real property tax pilot from 2016 with the 15 anchor institutions is pretty clear at the beginning in the third paragraph stating that the, neither party will attempt to reopen negotiations for that agreement. So I can't speak for the administration, but the language is in pretty uncertain terms.
Thank you.
There's no uncertain terms. Excuse me.
All right. We are going to move back to testimony. We do have a lot of folks tonight. This hearing probably go long. To me, it's a sign that folks in Baltimore really care about our schools and our kids, and that's a good thing. The other good thing is that we bought pizza, so if you're hungry, it's in the other room. Don't stampede out, though. Do it quietly. We're going to go back to Somos, one of the students from Somos, to come and testify. If no one goes and gets pizza, I will, but somebody's got to be hungry. Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. My name is Samin Sharaz. I'm a sophomore at Baltimore City College, and I'm an organizer of Somos, and I've been in the school system, Baltimore City Public School System, for two and a half years.
My name is Star Flores. I am a senior at Baltimore City College High School. I am also an organizer of Somos. I've been in the Baltimore City School System for about 12 years, probably a little more. I spent my first, like, the majority of my life at Hampstead Hill Academy, and I now go to City. So Baltimore City spends 14% on schools. And in, like, the Maryland average of that percentage that's spent on schools is 36%. And even the poorest counties, like, they spend 42% on schools.
It is really important for us to fund the schools because recently, our school crashed down, like, two of the classes, the pipes burst, and that was a really bad situation because the hallways were blocked and we had to move from one class to the other while taking long routes and had, even if you had to go to first floor, you had to go through, you have to go to the first floor, I mean, second floor, and then walk all the way around to go to first floor back to your class, which is really, really frustrating because you get late for your class and the teachers don't get that. The hallways are blocked, and it is really uncomfortable for you to study in that environment.
I can testify on that because when the pipes burst in two classrooms, we had two hallways that were blocked off. And my class was on the first floor, and instead of going my normal route, which usually takes me like two minutes, because we have five minutes to transition in our classes, I had to go to the third floor and walk towards the fourth, fourth stairway, and I had a stairwell, I'm sorry, and walk down to my class, and I was like a good seven minute, or two minutes late. And even though it's just two minutes, you still get marked late, and that goes on my record, and that affected us because it didn't only happen to me, but it happened to all the other students as well. And we couldn't start class or start our presentations until all the classes, all this class, all my classmates were there. And it took everybody, like, if it took me two minutes, it took another student three minutes, depending on where you're coming from and which route you're trying to take. That affects our education because now we have to wait 10 extra minutes, 15 extra minutes, and we only have like 40 minutes in class, and that's like 15 minutes that we could have spent learning something that's going to educate us.
Also, we need to have more advanced classes for all schools. For example, personally for me, I took pre-algebra for my middle school eighth grade, even though I should have taken Algebra I, which would help me in high school. As a sophomore right now, I'm taking Algebra I, whereas I should have been taking Math Analysis, which is a real problem as I'm already behind the general population, as their, majority of them are taking Math Analysis, which means that it is harder for me to learn the path I want to take, for example, Engineering or Health Sciences, which means that I'm already lacking behind from my courses that I should already have. Also, schools like City provide Ivy and AP classes to their students, and this opportunity should also be given to other high schools because this affects your GPA, like, it gives you a 1.5 boost, which is a lot, and it really helps you in your college credits and help you become really successful in college. So I think it's really important for, to fund schools because this 14% looks like this right now, but if we can help schools, we can really have higher graduation rates and best students going to college.
I also, I believe that it's also really important to fund schools because, for example, City had to share our ESOL program with two other schools last year, and this year, we are currently sharing our ESOL program with one other school. Although that is one less school, that still is really problematic for us because of the fact that, let's say, I was an ESOL student and I see my ESOL teacher for 45 minutes on a Monday, and if I had any questions during Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I would have to wait until Friday morning to be able to see my ESOL teacher and get clarification on the problem that I had. And that's really problematic because then that puts the ESOL student behind in their education, and that's, it shouldn't be like that.
Also, as the winter is coming nearer, which meaning that we need heat system for our schools, but the problem with school being not funded, with these, with this 14% only given to Baltimore City Public School, Baltimore City, it is really, it is really stressful that we have, we are taking days off from, from schools, meaning that we still need to perform well in our test, but with the lack of education, with those days we are spending at home and not school, it's really troublesome. And at the end of the year, we have to take five days off from our summer break and fulfill those days that we have already taken off from those heat days, I mean, those winter days or the heat days, which is really problematic because we need to perform well in our schools and on those tests that we are getting. So we really need to boost up this 14% to a higher number, like 36%, which is the average of the school funding.
And to add on to what she was saying about the heating and stuff, I believe it was this year and last year, like, the first week of school, we were off, I'm pretty sure, like, the whole week because it was so hot. And then when we came back and actually started our school year, we were already behind on the syllabus. And that is really stressful on us because now we had to adjust to the new syllabus that was given to us, like, like, it's just really, really stressful to adjust to a different syllabus when on the first day, when we were there for like, what, like, two classes, we had to, we had a syllabus that was given to us. We come back after being off because of how hot it was, and then we're put behind in our classes, and that's because we don't have any, it's so, like, when I tell you it is so hot in there, my Spanish class I had for the first three years of City, it was so hot in her class, and it was so hard to focus because it's, you're worried about how hot you are. You're constantly sweating, people constantly going out to go get drinks of water. So it's just really hard. And then when it's really cold, like, right now, like, several, not all my classes, but most of my classes are really, really cold, and maybe like, oh, yeah, just wear another sweater and wear extra pants, but like, it's still, it's still really annoying because then you have all these layers on you, and it still prevents you from, like, like, learning. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you also for your advocacy.
City forever.
All right. We will now hear from Jess Gartner. Jess will be followed by President Damonte Brown from the Teachers Union.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Jess Gartner. I am a former Baltimore City Schools teacher. I'm a 10-year Baltimore City resident, and I'm the CEO of Aloe View, an education finance company that works with school districts serving over a million students across the country. Tonight, I'd like to address Governor Hogan's aggressive and inaccurate attacks on our school system in his campaign to discredit the Kerwin Commission. First, Governor Hogan repeatedly spouts a talking point that Baltimore City has the third highest spending in the country. This is patently false. This refers only to the 100 largest districts in the country, a list that essentially serves as a proxy for cost of living by state, of which Maryland ranks among the highest. When you look at all 15,000 or so school districts, Baltimore City actually ranks about 4,470th. If you'd like to see this, there's a video of it on my Twitter feed right now. Second, the rabid calls for audits. To President Scott's points earlier, the school system is audited regularly. The appoint, the report is available in full online on OLA, and in my professional opinion, the 2018 audit findings suggest that North Avenue is actually understaffed compared to the level administration required to run a $1.3 billion school system. City leadership should shut down the falsehood that the school systems haven't been audited and flatly reject the unfounded notion that another audit would reveal some widespread mismanagement. This is false. Third, the unchecked dog whistles for accountability when the school system regularly publishes detailed budgets, funding formulas, and maintenance plans. Meanwhile, growth indicators have all increased under Dr. Santalisa's tenure. We have one of the most highly respected and sought-after school district CEOs in the entire country. This City Council and Mayor are failing her and our students. On the matter of Kerwin, it is absolutely true that the state has a regressive funding formula that is inequitable and inadequate, but it is also true that Baltimore City fails to make education a priority. Budgets are priorities, and this city annually sends the message that education is not one of ours. We needn't look further than any surrounding jurisdiction to see just how little we prioritize our young people relative to the rest of the state. And Director Seneme is correct that our city budget is different from our surrounding suburban and rural counterparts, and there are some apples and oranges comparisons that are flying around. But it is still shameful that we routinely allocate to education less than half of the budget that we put towards public safety, and I have watched this council approve what are essentially blank checks for police overtime while turning a blind eye to children and teachers who are shivering and sweltering in classrooms year after year. As it pertains to the proposed increased local contribution of $330 million to City Schools under Kerwin, the city should only be counting dollars that flow directly to the city school system and can be accounted for in their operating budget. While wraparound services and in-kind supports should also be part of the city's budget, they are not considered education funding as far as this formula is concerned and should be accounted for separately in the budget. So I leave you with two asks this evening. One, please create a united front and unified messaging with the school system to combat this outrageous campaign to discredit our city and defund our kids. And two, please dramatically reevaluate our priorities as a city and ensure that they are reflected in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Damonte Brown from the Baltimore Teachers Union.
Okay, I'm gonna try to make this very efficient. So it's clear that our city's number one priority is fighting crime, and unfortunately, we have dismissed the root causes of crime, which is most likely illiteracy. And somehow, we fail to connect that our schools are failing, therefore, crime has increased. Because when people are illiterate, they become poor, and then crime occurs. And the fact that we just keep talking about this as a disconnect is irresponsible, and it's, it's, it's a slap in the face to our children. Also, I thought I heard on the news early about a license plate tracker, and I don't remember anyone trying to figure out where we're getting that money from. Once again, because we were criminalizing our children, because I think somebody Christmas presents got taken or something like that. But we're standing here trying to figure out in front of our children how we're going to get money. Also, I understand that fiscal analyses and a lot of people in power like to compare things because it helps them put things in context, but I'm not going to stand up here and compare my children to anyone, and I shouldn't have to compare my children to anyone for them to be valued and for them to have an adequate education. And how dare we sit here and compare our city to other cities? Because I've been to a lot of other cities, and what I don't hear on the news every day is somebody got murdered. What I don't see is three vakes in between every house when I go to other cities. So all of the comparison between urban, urban places, let's, let's be real, is not the same. And I'm certain everyone in this room has traveled a lot, too, and you have never seen the amount of murders that come on our news stations every day in any other city. So stop trying to compare our city to other cities. It's not the same. And when we are in a state of emergency because every single day we hear murder on our TV, we can't be thinking the same way. We can't use the same formulas to assess how we finance things. Also, we totally, totally get somehow that in order to fight crime, we need to put our money where our mouth is. However, we continue to hesitate to put our money where our mouth is in order to better our education system. It is absolutely mind-boggling. So I'm asking us to get some courage. I really want to say it in a different way, but this is, I'm trying to be great up here. So we need to get some courage, and we need to stand up for our children. So that maybe instead of the news reporting a murder every day, they'll report stuff like Dee Brown, BTU president, BCPSS grad, Brandon Scott, City Council President, BCPSS grad, Senator Cardin, BCPSS graduate. That's what we should be hearing on the news every day, but we don't because instead of us funding our schools. But we don't because instead of us funding our schools, we're too worried about criminalizing our children and trying to figure out how we lock them up because we're afraid that they're gonna rob us or, or hijack our cars. If they were in school because they wanted to be there, because we actually provided them something, maybe they wouldn't be doing that. But we're not making that correlation. And everyone in here is educated enough to know that illiteracy is a direct correlation to crime. Lastly, I wanna say that the report from the Finance Department here is absolutely insulting. This is called fiscal readiness for Kerwin. And all we heard is fiscal unreadiness. And when you have children standing in front of you, instead of telling us all the reasons we can't, we expected a presentation on how we're going to get it done. We're tired of hearing what we can't do and how challenging it is. We want you to tell us how we're going to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joseph Kane is the Vice President of PCAP. Come on up.
Just a small correction, Mr. Chair. I'm the Treasurer this year of PCAP. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, Council President Scott, Mr. Chair, and other council members in the room this evening, and everyone else concerned about the future of public education in Baltimore City. Uh, my name is Joe Kane. I'm a parent of two elementary school children who attend Waverly Elementary Middle School. And I'm also a parent of two first-year students at Baltimore School for the Arts. My wife and I also attended City Schools. This evening, I am here speaking from those experiences as well as the member, um, of the Parent Community Advisory Board for Baltimore City Schools. Fully funding education is an investment in the future of Baltimore City. As a board that was legislated by the Maryland General Assembly to ensure the voices of parents and community members are present in the policy decision-making process of City Schools, we regularly engage parents and community members. Every day, we hear horror stories from the, uh, horror stories of the conditions of some City Schools. Schools where pipes burst, HVAC systems are inoperable, schools with no drinking water, and equipment that don't work. We hear about the stress parents and students have while trying to meet a rigorous standard that weighs assessments at 70%. While that standard is debatable, we know that what's not debatable? The need for wraparound supports that provide interventions for students. What's not debatable is the need for supports that provide parents with the tools to better help their children. Again, fully funding education is an investment in the future of Baltimore City. Parents and community members have proven time and time again their willingness to fight on behalf of our students. We went to Annapolis to tell the Maryland General Assembly to fix the gap. We fought for a bridge to Kerwin. And we went last year when three bills came before the General Assembly to put more guns in school, we fought back. However, you can't send us back to Annapolis again without doing your part. We've heard from the high-ranking state officials who believe in funding Kerwin and who will fight to ensure the students of Baltimore get what they need, but we've been called out on our city for not doing its part. Fully funding education is an investment in the future of Baltimore City. The Parent and Community Advisory Board is calling Baltimore City to fully fund Kerwin and stop making excuses. Finally, this evening, we heard from budget representatives who gave a presentation full of excuses on why we can't fund education. This is the sentiment we have to stop. These excuses are never a barrier when we're budgeting half a billion dollars for police and approving unlimited overtime. Imagine what our city would be if the budgets were reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna hear from Shemoya Gardner, followed by Donald Manikin.
Good evening. I'm Shemoya Gardner, Education Policy Director at Advocates for Children and Youth. ACY builds a strong Maryland by advancing policies and programs to ensure that children of every race, ethnicity, and place of birth have the opportunity to achieve their full potential. Baltimore City is the bellwether for the state of Maryland. Its people are inherently valuable and our students are capable of self-determination so long as they have access to the resources they require to thrive. Linnea from The Intersection said it best, and we must honor her and her peers by speaking plainly. If Baltimore City were a predominantly white city, it would be acknowledged for being on the cutting edge and wouldn't be taking advantage of financially in the way that it has. An example: common sense and empirical research bear out that if students are suspended and expelled from their schools, their academic achievement is negatively impacted. Research demonstrates that effective implementation of restorative practices and other methods yield better outcomes for students. Way back in 2016, Dr. Santaliesis began laying the groundwork for the blueprint, which prioritizes restorative approaches as one of its three key tenets. Now, we see counties like Howard receiving national grants to implement restorative practices and school system administrators in Allegheny asking for funding to implement the model effectively. Charles County, on the other hand, has allocated nearly a million dollars over the last two years to create an alternative school for five-year-olds. There's your conversation about fiscal irresponsibility. Baltimore City has been ahead of the curve. Another example: Cecil County is in the midst of a shift to trauma responsiveness in answer to the fallout from the opioid epidemic. Chair Cohen's Trauma Responsive Care Act is in good company. My point is, Baltimore doesn't lack solutions, we lack systemic commitment to effectively implementing the solutions we create. While I will leave the discussion of the need for continuation of the City-State partnership, which governs City's schools, to the folks whose responsibility it is to make those decisions, I will say this: it's no coincidence that legislation which accompanied the Bradford ruling and spurred the work of the Thornton Commission way back in the 90s exercised state control over a local agency and has created a false divide between our local and state officials and left our students standing in the gap between them. We're urging the Mayor, the Council, and relevant agency heads to consider the unintended consequences of decisions made here and in the Board of Estimates meeting room. Baltimore City cannot afford to not fund its share of public education funding. Maryland must do more to equitably and adequately resource our systems. Both are true, neither is a good reason to delay taking action for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Donald Manikin.
Members of the Council, um, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, I would share with you that this is, the Kerwin piece, um, is, really brings great opportunity to the business community. So, um, Strong Schools Maryland brought together some business leaders and said, if in fact that entering pre-K student graduating 14 years later is really ready for the workforce, what's the economic benefit to the state of Maryland? So, um, a number of folks in the business community put a fund together. Tiro Price, Southway Builders, Howard Bank, PNC Bank, Seawall, and others put together money, a grant, um, so that we could engage, say, Anurban Basu from Sage Policy to do a, an economic study that said, when the Kerwin Commission is, um, implementing, implementing and fully implemented, what is the economic benefit to the state of Maryland, i.e. and Baltimore City? So, those things that we looked at and asked Anurban and Sage to look at was, hey, the high cost of incarceration. We spend now, there was a study done a few years ago, that, uh, as, as taxpayers, we're paying 425,000, 425 million dollars a year to incarcerate high school dropouts. I don't need to be a rocket scientist to figure out what you could invest, how you could invest that differently so that the outcome was prisons with plenty of rooms available and not, and not being occupied. We also looked at the increase in tax revenues, um, as a result of, I mean, if you looked at, um, that, that three-year, if you looked at education as a conveyor belt, beginning at pre-K, graduating 14 years later, that impact on the business community is really significant. And so we wanted to look at what that would look like. So, obviously, increasing tax revenues, expanding the labor force participation, child, childcare savings for parents, parents now with their children in pre-K and, and, uh, additional time that they could be spending in Judy Centers, which is a part of the Kerwin Commission for, uh, bless you, for, uh, income, um, for low-income jurisdictions, that mother and/or father will now be able to go out into the, into the workforce and be wage earners as against having to pay for childcare service, services. Diminished, diminished, um, uh, demand for public, um, public assistance. And there, and I'm happy to make this Kerwin Commission report available to you all so you all can see the detail of it. But if we looked at just certain, certain pieces of it, comparison of estimated outcomes for current public, Maryland Public School students, right now, there's, uh, the status quo for entering, there are 8900, 8970, 8,970 students that have, uh, less than a high school dra, less than a high school diploma. Um, and there are 10,000, um, presently 10,902 with a bachelor's degree. With the implementation of the Kerwin, that number of high school dropouts would, um, would go from, or le, less than a high school diploma would go from 8970 to 4485. And the number of students, uh, with bachelor's degree would increase from 10,000 to 21,000. The lifetime earnings for a high school, um, with a high, with less than a high school diploma is 440,000, 447,000. If you're with some college or associate degree, it's 949,000. With a bachelor's degree, it's a million 676,000 dollars. Lifetime, uh, tax payments, federal, state, and local taxes, this goes to the piece about whether there will be additional resources for the city. Um, less than a high school diploma is basically 35,000. Um, some college and associate degree is 95,000, and the bachelor's degree is 221,000. Um, preschool, uh, this goes back to the issue about moms being able to now go back into the workforce, bless you. Um, mothers entering the workforce would go from, in fiscal year 2021, would go from 2,417 to 10,649. And earnings and tax payments of employed mothers, um, would go to, from 87,000 to 382 million. Um, and the, uh, the taxes in 2030, by way of example, when the Kerwin Commission, um, is it fully implemented, this, the tax piece goes from 5.9 million to 26.1 million and local taxes go from 5 million to 21.9 million. So, the return on investment in just those categories is really significant and the business community felt that this was a piece that we really wanted to lobby for. So, thank you for your time and we'll send you a copy of the report.
Thank you. We appreciate the copy of that report.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Kimberly Humphrey, followed by Joe Franciviglia.
Hello, uh, Council President and Chair of the Committee. Thank you so much for having me. Um, my name is Kim Humphrey. I am Legislative Council at the ACLU of Maryland. And, um, I am here today to talk about the importance of, um, us all working together, the city, the council, and the school system, and, uh, members of the public. Uh, the ACLU is committed to, in advancing the constitutional duty to ensure that every student has the resources that they need to meet state standards and, more importantly, to thrive. This means that public school students must be funded sufficiently. This is regardless of zip code. Uh, and, and I just emphasize that because what we are here, um, arguing about today has a lot to do with the gap, the gaps in adequacy and the, um, general underfunding because we are a low-wealth district. So to that end, I have specific points that I would encourage you that we must focus on as we move forward. That includes wealth equalization, the delineation of services that are within Kerwin, and how they, uh, fall into the categorical weights, and the accountability plan that makes sure that what happens with Kerwin, um, that as on paper, it actually happens in practice. Uh, that is essential to seeing the transition that we all want. So on the first point of wealth equity, again, we have to work together, we have to meet adequacy. The proposal as it stands does not shift more new dollars to school districts or students that have been underserved. It does not do that. These districts have been underserved, disinvested, neglected, ignored, whatever phrase you want to use. The, as it stands, we have more work to do in making sure that the targets that are set, that we're arguing about, are the targets that will get our kids what they need. So the purpose of a formula is to make sure that the students get what they need and, and not just to say, let's just get this done. Um, and then on the points that have been made all evening, we cannot manage our way out of improper and inadequate funding. It's just not going to happen. So, uh, there are a few other baseline issues that, that I urge you to bring up in the legislature as we continue to fight for what Kerwin actually does. Um, there's a conversation about the wealth equity being 50/50. 50/50 is equal, not equity. We have a wealth equalized formula. So we need to be asking for a more, a more transparent, uh, review of the wealth equalization that has been put before us. Um, we are very concerned about the number, um, because of the needs and the weights. Um, Baltimore City has a big, uh, big, um, price tag to meet. And we want to make sure that we can actually meet that. We have to make sure that that is accurate and that it, it meets adequacy. So, um, next, a clear delineation of the services that are provided are essential to making sure that we get what we need. And that, that means that we need more transparency on what those services actually are. So if we are going to make sure that, uh, the school system gets all of the services that they outlined, we need that accounting. To this point, we don't know what services are included in the compensatory aid, in the ELL, in the students with disabilities. There's only been a focus on the base. The base goes to all students. Those conversations were, uh, based on the needs of working Group Four, which were at-risk students, which are our students, but those funds and those programs have been put in the base. That is a problem. Lastly, um, I wanna talk about accountability. In order to make sure that we are moving forward with Kerwin, um, that it does what we said, that we say it wa, it should do, uh, we have to push for an equity audit, a clear timeline, and make sure that the guidance for that is included in any, um, legislation. And we want to emphasize that we have community partnerships as this process goes forward. Um, and I think it's worth noting a cautionary tale about Massachusetts. So in 1993, Massachusetts embarked on a similar journey. It was sparked by litigation and they, uh, redid their funding formulas. They concluded by tying funding to accountability and calling for local communities to fill in the differences. So fast forward to 2015, and Massachusetts is battling severe shortages in their state budgets and their locals, and they are unable to meet the needs in their districts. This experience bears unfortunate similarity to where we are today. Maryland is at a crossroads. The state has a duty. We cannot leave districts that are severely underfunded now and struggle to meet their, uh, their local wealth projections. We just can't leave them to say, you deal with it, you figure it out. We have to make sure that these targets can be met. So in closing, I will just emphasize that this is not over. Uh, we do not wanna just say whatever has come forward through the Kerwin recommendations is perfect and we're gonna go, go forward with it because if we do that, we are shooting ourselves in the foot, um, as Baltimore City and as other low-wealth districts that are struggling and, um, responding to underfunding. So, please focus on wealth equity going forward. We need more transparency in that. Um, please work together because we have to be united. Uh, we have to make sure that the state provides what they should. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Franciviglia.
Good evening. Am I the last scheduled speaker before public comment?
We're about to, yep.
Awesome. Keynote address, I appreciate it.
[laughing].
So, uh, so my name's Joe Franciviglia. I'm the Executive Director of Strong Schools Maryland. I appreciate the time being here tonight. And I wanna start just by thanking the council and the Mayor's Office for starting this conversation. This conversation is long overdue. Too often in the city, we talk about what can we do for the next four years, not the next 40 years. Um, and this is the single most important economic development opportunity that the City of Baltimore and the State of Maryland have in Baltimore and the state of Maryland have in front of them. This is what's going to change the state, and this is what's going to change the city. So, this isn't just about schools, it's not just the moral case, this is an economic development opportunity, and it's the biggest our state has seen of the last twenty years. And so, you heard Donald Manikin talk about the report, I brought copies for everyone if you like paper, so I'll leave these here, so you can grab one, but we also will send them to you digitally as well. I do want to talk about some of the top-line reports. The executive summary is three pages, so for those of you that don't want to read all seventy-six pages, the first three pages are going to be all the top lines. And just to give you what that means, number one, by 2034, the fiscal benefits will eclipse annual costs. So, when we're thinking about spending, we need to think about the return on investment as well. So, by 2034, we will eclipse the annual costs with the benefits that we will receive. Second, every cohort of students, so every graduating cohort of students, so not every group of four, but every single graduating class of students, which is about seventy thousand students in the state of Maryland, will return four point five billion dollars annually above social costs, above what we're doing now, should we fully implement and fund the Kerwin Commission recommendations. That's four point five billion statewide, a large percentage of that coming to Baltimore City. Again, this is an economic development opportunity. And third, by the time the first student goes through the entire process and receives their graduate degree, we will not only just eclipse expenses, but we'll actually recover every single dollar that we've invested from here through when that student receives their graduate degree. So, this isn't just about eclipsing costs, this is about also recovering for our economy as well. And so, I do want to just end, and finally, say, you know, the saying goes, show me your budget, and I'll show you your priorities and your values. As a city and a state, we need to make difficult choices. No one is saying this is going to be easy, there's not a magic lever behind somewhere that you can pull to solve this problem, but we haven't had a moment like this since 2002. The public is behind you, the public is ready for this, the public opinion polls tell us you're ready for this, showing up at grocery stores, I'm sure people are pulling on your arms, saying, we need to fix our schools, the public is ready to invest. Do not back down from the challenge that's in front of you. This is the opportunity, not just because it's the moral and the right thing to do, this is the smart economic thing to do. There is an argument to be made because it's right, there's an easier argument to be made that this is going to help our economy in the long term. So, please don't back down from this challenge, don't look to scale back, don't look to compromise, look to take this fight all the way to the State House, win it here in City Hall, win it in Annapolis, and we'll have a changed economy for the city and the state for the next forty years. So, I appreciate you giving me this time, I will leave those, thank you Allison for picking those up, I appreciate it, and I will also send you digital copies, but thank you again for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Joseph Carey.
Thank you, won't be too much, won't be long at all. I just want to come here, show my support, pretty much, it's everybody get involved, and that's what I'm doing. So, here I am. A couple of things, just to show some comments on, I'm all for school, I'm all for putting anything, any money we can into the public school system. I graduated from Patterson High School, so I'm all for anything we can do to help that school out, as well as the public school system itself. The only thing I don't like about this particular Kerwin is the, is, you know, taking away five percent of parks and recs, or recs and parks, cutting that is, is a problem. If we can come up with something that won't do that, you know, if we can work around, you know, something, because we have four thousand acres of park land that has to be, you know, watched over, and, you know, they're, they're already shorthanded already. So, if we can work around something with that, that would be, be nice. But again, with the public school system itself, I'm all for doing everything we can to help them out. But, you know, as far as, I, I think we said something about the homeless, we're cutting that as well. I think there was something there, we're cutting a little bit of the homeless as well, I think we said something about that within that particular thing. If we can do something to work around that, too, I think would be something that we could try to work around, you know, within that, too. But, you know, as far as, you know, pretty much, you know, I, I think we, you know, we're, we're located, where I'm located, where Joseph Lee, Joseph V. Lee Park, I mean, that's, that's a huge situation up there, I mean, with parks and recs. So, I, I mean, I, I don't want to cut anything around that, I mean, where Patterson High School is. So, I mean, that's a, that, that means a lot to me, it's, you know, hits me hard, you know, hits me right here, so. You know, with southeast middle, southeastern district itself already shorthanded, you know, you cut that, you know, we have an issue, so. You know, if you can keep that in mind, you know, with this particular situation, you know, I see that every day, I walk the dog every day, so, I mean, you know, I see the kids, you know, what that does. And I know, you know, what we need to do to help them, to help the kids out there, you know, you know, so, again, you know, try to get some messages for the kids. Within the school system itself, I think, if we can come up with something within the school system, besides the fact of just building the school system up, let's come up with some type of program within the school system itself. Maybe something to do with, you know, I know that we, we stopped civics a long time ago. I think maybe something to do with some type of subject to, to help out the kids with, you know, I know civics was stopped a long time ago, but with certain programs within the school system besides history and everything else that goes along with certain subjects, but maybe help them out with certain programs within, within the teaching itself could help them out. Also, you know, we're building up the schools itself, I mean, we need to also have teachers, you know, we're going to, you know, have all these new schools that we play.
Hey, Mr. Carey, just make sure you're speaking into the mic.
We're going to put like a hundred and ten million dollars into school systems, we also need to also entice teaching. Teachers also come to teach these children. So, we can have all the school systems built up, but without the teachers themselves teaching, it's not really, you know, it's kind of like an empty, empty hall. So, we need to, you know, I praise teachers, I mean, I, I know what they go through, I mean, you know, I mean, I praise all you guys for, you know, what you're doing. So, I mean, we want to entice the teachers to actually come into the rooms, you know, the teaching rooms, to teach the young children. So, I mean, you know, we could put a lot of money into schools without the, the teachers themselves coming to entice them to teach our kids, then, that's, that's something we want to, you know, it's something, keep that in mind.
Yep.
I mean, I was born and raised in Baltimore City, I love Baltimore City, I'm here to stay, not going anywhere, so, you know, I appreciate everybody who's come out here to, to help out, rolling it together, like you had said before, keep up, not a going one. And, you know, I just want to say, that's why I'm here, so here, here, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, for your testimony, and appreciate your support for teachers. We know that is one of the recommendations in the Kerwin Commission, is raising standards in pay and making it the profession that it really should be, which is much more highly paid. Thank you for, for your testimony. Is Rosalyn Hyde still around? Shorty Dwayne Davis? Nope. Jane Henderson? Jane is going to be followed by Brig Dumas? Yep, you and then Brig Dumas.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, Chairman Cohen, and who are still here listening, I appreciate that. I'm Jane Henderson, I'm the Executive Director of Communities United, we're a grassroots membership organization of low-income Marylanders. I'm here tonight to talk about, like, say many things about Kerwin, we're strongly in support of the Kerwin Commission recommendations. We actually have been pushing around community schools for several years now, and are really particularly excited. Dr. Central, you just talked about the hundred and eighteen schools, community schools in Baltimore City that are going to be part of the Kerwin funding, and obviously, we've heard enough about the investment and how important this is. I want to talk to you specifically about the Baltimore City budget, and I want to offer you our analysis, I'll give you some copies, share with committee members. This is an analysis of the current fiscal year twenty, twenty budget, looking at the priorities. And let's be clear, let's start with one basic fact. I challenge anyone to find another city in the country that spends more per capita on police than Baltimore City. In the current year budget, it's eight hundred and seventeen dollars. If you looked at analysis done by our national partner, the Center for Popular Democracy in 2017, looked at a bunch of jurisdictions across the country, and found that Baltimore was, then it was seven hundred and seventy-six dollars per resident, the closest jurisdiction was five hundred and ninety-nine. That's twenty-five percent more than the next jurisdiction. The same year, Detroit, lot of similar problems with Baltimore, spent four hundred and fifty dollars per capita. New York spent five hundred and eighty-one, Houston spent three hundred and eighty-three. Baltimore must right-size its police department. In the current year budget, for every dollar spent on police, the city spends fifty-one on schools. I'm going to say that again, for every dollar spent on police, the city spends fifty-one on schools, on fifty-one cents on schools. We spend a penny on substance abuse and mental health, which is another whole thing, while more than twice as many people die of overdose in the city as murder, but we're talking about schools now, which is obviously the biggest line item, ticket, and obviously the biggest challenge. Kerwin offers this city an opportunity to right-size the police department. I know that's tough, I know that's a hard conversation. I have members that we've had long conversations to come to this point of, of taking this position. People want more policing, although in poor communities in the city, what people want are cops to get out of their cars and patrol, they don't really necessarily want more cops, it's just they don't see any cops. To give a perspective, over the last several, the last ten years, the police budget has grown sixty-seven percent from three hundred and seventeen point two million in 2015 fiscal year ten to the five hundred and twenty-seven point two million today. This outpaces the growth of the general fund, which increased by about forty-four percent over the same period of time. And this is discretionary money, this is money that the city could be using in other I want to just close by saying again, you have an opportunity with the Kerwin Challenge to really take this on. I agree with a lot of people, five percent out of the parks and rec budget doesn't make sense, but twenty to twenty-five percent out of the police budget, I realize it'll take years, a few years to get there, you got ten, right? But this needs to happen, literally, the police department is bleeding this city dry. And until that changes, we won't have police reform, and we won't have fully funded schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Brig Dumas, followed by Terrell Askew.
Thank you, Chairman, and Council President Scott, and the rest of the members of the City Council and their staff. My name is Brig Dume, I'm the Executive Director of the Maryland Workforce Alliance, and we are a coalition of labor unions, trade associations, and apprenticeship sponsors advocating for robust career and technical education programs, integrated with registered youth degree apprenticeships. Our members include 1199 SEIU, Biotechnical Institute of Maryland, Cyber Security Association of Maryland, Baltimore Alliance for Careers in Healthcare, Maryland Automobile Dealers Association, Trans Ed Apprenticeship Services, SEIU 32BJ, Health Facilities of Maryland, Maryland Center for Construction Education and Innovation, Maryland Tech Council, Heating and Air Conditioning Contractors of Maryland, Baltimore DC Building Trades Unions, Maryland Hospital Association, and the Marine Trade Association of Maryland. Our alliance supports the following key recommendations for workforce development through the Kerwin Commission. One, expanding dual enrollment programs to earn tuition-free college credits while in high school, with the goal of earning both an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the conclusion of twelfth grade. Two, forty-five percent of students achieving a market valuable occupational credential by twelfth grade, which could include college credits. Three, establishing and implementing a college and career readiness standard set to global standards. Four, requiring all local school systems to provide all students who meet the college and career readiness standards with access to a set of post-CRR program pathways that includes free college up to an associate's degree. The increasing cost of college and the rise in student debt has made higher education a barrier to, rather than an accelerator of, economic opportunity for young working people. Registered apprenticeships enable students to earn free college credits while in high school, and get paid on-the-job training to earn an industry-recognized credential that will guarantee a living wage job with benefits upon high school graduation. It is a low-cost, high-return investment in our youth that has the capacity to lift working families out of poverty, and allows students to get the well-rounded education they need to succeed. We urge the council to fully fund the college and career readiness and workforce development recommendations from the Kerwin Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrell Askew will be followed by John McGill.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I stand here thirty-three years old, my birthday hasn't been yesterday.
Happy birthday.
Thanks. Lifelong resident of this city, a product of Baltimore City Public Schools, I'm proof positive that you can succeed in this city even when your city leadership and your state leadership fail you. I can recall in elementary school, being in classes where there were no less than forty to forty-five students, all of us crammed in, it's hot, and we still have to learn because we're told we have to be there. I can recall being in high school where we had no heat, and the teacher just simply said, well, everyone remember to bring your coat next time. Imagine being in a class of fifty students, trying to hear with the teeth, with teeth chattering in your ear. This is the very ingredients that we have put in to create the situation that we have now. I came out of Baltimore City Public Schools more than fifteen years ago, and we're still having this discussion. Quiveling over how, on why, on how to actually fund the Kerwin Commission is an insult to our students, it's an insult to our residents. We claim that Baltimore City is a great city, and that people should want to live here, but why would I want to live here when I, when the city failed me as a child? Simply to be much more direct, the Kerwin Commission, a lot of the things that are, that are in it, which I had an opportunity to read when I was trying to prepare for this, are things that should have been done when I was a youth. If they had been done then, the city wouldn't feel the need to have half a billion dollars to have a police force that essentially acts as zookeepers. We are not zoo animals, we are human beings. If we were treated as such when we were young, we would have a better city now. Finally, I want to address what he's left, but Councilman Costello said about the actual pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxation, which fifteen not-for-profit institutions, including John Hopkins Hospital, John Hopkins University, Loyola, MICA, and Sinai, paid to the city six million dollars instead of a hundred and twenty million that they would pay if they were for, for, for-profit institutions. I don't care what back, what back-room deal that was, I don't care what it says, that was an undemocratic process, it robs our city of resources, and it must be revisited. There is no way that we can simply keep telling our students and our residents to trust in the process. in the process when we have a situation where we quibble over funding something that would actually beautify our city in the right way, yet last year, we had a whole big kerfuffle about how $20 million was moved from one fund to actually fund overtime for cops. This madness has to stop, and we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. John McGill followed by Stephanie Sexton. No, no. All right. Charles Eubanks. All right.
So, I'm here.
No problem. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for this. I'm here to say I fully support funding the Kerwin Commission and investing in Baltimore City Public Schools. I just want to come back to what someone, what we were saying earlier about the payment in lieu of taxes agreement. I want to encourage everyone to open up this pilot agreement. One, I'm a, I've worked, I worked after-school for a couple of years at Frederick Douglass High School, including during the uprising, and I'm currently a second-year PhD student at Johns Hopkins. I study the police. So I want to echo what some other people have said before, which is that investing in education is a public safety investment, first of all. And that, so I teach undergraduates at Hopkins, and they do not come from places that are less wealthy than Baltimore City. That is, Baltimore City has enclaves of massive wealth. So when we're talking about not funding this, we should never say that this is a poor city. There are massive institutions of wealth here, including Johns Hopkins. So when they don't pay property tax, they're not paying property tax on 988 separate properties. That's how many properties Johns Hopkins owns. And they pay the equivalent of 3.6% in gifts to the city on what they would pay if they were taxed, right? As someone else said before. But their properties are just one of the ways that they hoard wealth. They also have the endowment. Their endowment is worth $4.3 billion, and there's a 1% federal tax on that, right? So I think everyone here who pays rent and who is a property owner might be, might feel grieved at this point that this institution that has a lot of property, that has a lot of wealth, is paying less proportionally than all of us, right? So I'll be brief, but I don't think there's any reason why a predominantly white education institution should be allowed to hoard wealth while Baltimore City Public Schools, which is majority black, has an underfunded education system. I'm asking the City Council to renegotiate the payment in lieu of taxes and ask Hopkins to pay into the city. And there was an issue earlier about, well, we can't just break the agreement. I think we can break bad agreements, and Hopkins breaks their agreement all the time when they do not give their fair share back to the city, including they're getting federal and state funding for healthcare for low-income, for low-income residents that they do not give to those residents. That is, the state gives millions of dollars to Hopkins Hospital that they do not offer to low-income patients. Instead, they sue them. So Hopkins breaks their agreements all the time, and I think we should for Baltimore City Public School students. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, we will be having a hearing, which committee, Mr. President? Committee of the whole will be having a hearing on revisiting the payment in lieu of taxes. Next up, Mr. Eubanks.
Hello. Thank you all for putting on this hearing and for the chance to get up and talk. I actually live in your district, Councilman Cohen. I've lived there for about two years, originally from Arkansas. So if I sound something that's, say something that's a little too country, just like, I don't know, I'll try to translate. I really appreciated your analogy, President Scott. In the beginning, you were talking about flipping over couch cushions and looking for change, and I wanted to come here today to point out what I think would be a particularly lucrative couch cushion in the form of this pilot agreement. Basically, I'm also a member of a coalition for Humane Hopkins and the Baltimore City Chapter of Democratic Socialists of America. We all fully support the current commission's recommendations and support Baltimore City's public school teachers as they advocate for their students. We agree the city must do more, and part of doing more must include reopening and renegotiating the city's pilot agreement and requiring the wealthiest institutions among us to pay their fair share of this tax burden. If Johns Hopkins Hospital and Bayview Hospital were taxed like any other business, their tax obligation to the city would be more than $35 million a year. Currently, I think they're paying about $3 million under that agreement. And that's just the part of the agreement that's Hopkins. So while the mayor has the ultimate authority to reopen and renegotiate pilot, it's on all of us to elevate this issue and get the Committee of the Whole up and running to continue to demand that Hopkins and other wealthy institutions pay more so we can fund our schools and our other city services for that matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for living in the best district in all of Baltimore, with the exception of District 8, my councilman over there. Now Shannon Darrow followed by Jocelyn Providence.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Darrow. I'm here with the Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition. We work to advance economic justice and financial inclusion for all Marylanders. And I'm here today because the current pilot agreement that Baltimore has with these large anchor institutions undermines economic justice in our city and promotes economic exclusion. We're encouraging you to renegotiate the terms of that agreement with Baltimore's medical and academic nonprofit institutions in order to provide resources that our city desperately needs, including adequately funding our public schools. Currently, tax-exempt properties are a third of Baltimore's total tax base, and under this current agreement, large institutions pay just 5% of what they would pay if they were taxed as for-profit groups. And what this does is shifts the burden of paying for essential services in our city to ordinary homeowners and renters in a way that's profoundly unjust and inequitable. Requiring that universities and hospitals pay their fair share of taxes would generate the revenue that we need for our schools. We shouldn't be talking about things like cutting the budgets of Rec and Parks when there are other ways that we could raise money. There's some cities like Boston that have a 25% pilot with similar institutions, and we strongly encourage the mayor and city council to look for alternatives so we can have the kind of resources we need for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn Providence. All right. Rashi Turniaski.
I don't have any prepared remarks. I just decided, so I might not be as well-prepared, but I am Rashi Turniaski. I'm a teacher in Baltimore City Public Schools and Guilford Elementary Middle. Yeah. So the reason I wanted to speak up is, any argument that I could have made about how we could definitely fund this, how it's worth it economically, that's all already been made. But I wanted to say that it gets a little tiring to hear this kind of discussion about how could we possibly pay for this? Where's the money going to come from? What can we possibly be spending it on that could make it any better? When education is the bedrock of our society, this is, well, it is our society. Like, nothing that ever gets done in a society has ever been done without people learning how to do what they're supposed to do. And to discuss whether we should cut a little bit from here, or maybe we have too many police, too much police presence in the city, is frankly, is antithetical to the very concept of what a city or a society itself should be about. It should be about, at its basic level, is about preparing all of its citizens to be not just productive and secure, but should be able to thrive. So I had a student today, actually, that said that she wanted to drop out of middle school, and I said, "That's, you really shouldn't do that." She said, "Well, it's either that or I have to kill myself." And I don't think that she was being entirely serious about that, but it was still kind of shocking that, when I pressed her on it, she said that "I just don't feel like I have a place here." And it wasn't like she wasn't doing bad in any of her classes. She's one of the highest-achieving students, but the entire school system is not set up in a way that makes the students feel like they're a part of something. They feel like they're being forced into a conveyor belt, kind of. They're, this is, they go here, they have to be here, there's no other thing for them to do during the day. If they're not there, they're getting in trouble. And they're forced in with all these other students. In many cases, they're forced in with way too many students. Tensions are high, they are coming from areas of trauma. There's, it's a giant crucible of high emotions, and it makes all of my students feel unsafe. And the thing that needs to be done to fix that is, we can't just be focusing on paying teachers more or getting more teachers. There needs to be way more trauma relief services. And someone mentioned that, like, the funding that is guaranteed by the, or would be guaranteed by Kerwin legislation should be for all those academic things. And then the city itself needs to also pay its fair share of relieving the trauma that has been inflicted on these communities by overpolicing, by economic disinvestment. They need to be fixed in order for the system itself to be fixed. So I just wanted to add a personal note to the proceedings that this is not just a question of pure morality or economic development. This is also, these are actual people that we are dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for teaching in Baltimore. Akil Patterson, after Akil, I don't have anyone else on the list, but anyone from the public who, anyone from the public who does want to testify is welcome to come on up after Akil.
Thank you all very much. You know, I remember when I was in school, and I went to high school in Frederick County, and it was a little different, you know? Normally, instead of worrying about being too hot, I was worrying about crosses being, like, burned down the street. It was a real thing, right? But I still look at our students today and I go, "They're pretty tough. They're pretty resilient. They're pretty smart, right?" We've got young people who, out of boredom, learned how to hack a bunch of birds and drive them around. We've got young people who are so good at computer programs that a couple of them I hired to run websites for other people, other of my clients. We've got young people who are so in tune with their bodies that they are going on to achieve national and international success as athletes. What we don't have are good business practices. And I don't know anyone else who's ever run a business and looks at a guy who loses money every year and goes, "We should give you more." So we've gone from $367 million to a police department 10 years ago to half a billion dollars of a 2.6 billion-dollar operating budget, and they get all this money, and yet their FOP decides to go on Twitter and start challenging everything publicly. We're being funded, I'm sorry, FOP is being funded by our money to make us look like assholes, excuse my language. We have to stop the madness. We've got to stop the bleeding, and we've got to stop bad practices of giving money to things that just clearly don't work. Education has been proven to work. Overpolicing, not so much. We know students that are engaged in after-school activities are more inclined to not be engaged in criminal activities. So why don't we start putting our money where our mouth really is and stop putting it across the street over there, and let's go put it to some North Ave students, and let's stop with the wasteful spending of our money. This city will do better, but it will not do better under complacency. It will not do better under leadership that keeps throwing the bill to somebody else. You've got to stop. Larry Hogan has made this crap up for three years, and nobody was listening when we kept saying, "Larry Hogan's wrong." I heard a legislator from Prince George's County say to me, "Oh, you're in Baltimore? You'll be fine. We're suffering." You even choked on that one. No, it's not us versus them. It is a we. The Kerwin Commission is supposed to do across the entire state and help everybody operate better. Instead, Larry Hogan, Fat Larry, as I like to call him, is sitting over there in his house, eating some bonbons, talking about, "Let's just blame Baltimore for this. Let's blame somebody that works in the finance office for everything wrong with Baltimore. Let's blame somebody who doesn't have any authority." So we keep talking about, "Well, you're overspending on police, you're overspending on education." Well, hell, I would like us to stop spending on police altogether. We don't control that either, so why don't he pick up the bill? Matter of fact, if he doesn't return it to us, we should send him the bill. Every year, until he leaves, just keep sending him the bill. Say, "This is the bill that you owe Baltimore City, and let's see if he'll take us to court." Because I want to hear his defense in court, how we are mandated to pay for a police force and pay for everything else, but no. If we try to move money towards our schools, he looks at us like we're crazy, saying, "Oh, it's a waste of money." We are not wasting money on after-school programs. We will not waste money on before-care programs. We will not waste money on universal pre-K, which, Mr. Cohen, I do remember, that was your key thing. And they're still dragging their feet. Students who are engaged earlier have higher success rates. Once we get our students squared away, we're going to keep working on their parents. We're going to get them jobs. There are opportunities, there are more ways to save money. We could save money if we didn't end up in litigation over personality differences for somebody that dug a trench. Or we end up in litigation over sewage backup. Or we end up in litigation over corruption. We spend more time litigating, and litigation is expensive. We spend more time litigating in this city over things that could have been avoided. So we're going to stop litigation, we're going to start instruction, and we need to remove the wasteful spending that continuously goes towards overpolicing. Let's divest and let's reinvest that money into programs that have been proven to work, and let's not go to Boston and go get them. Those programs exist right here in Baltimore, where we have executive directors that can do those jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to testify? All right. Hearing no one, I want to sincerely thank, first and foremost, the public and everyone who came and made your voice heard tonight. You know, we hear a lot in, about how we can't afford to pay more for our schools, we can't afford Kerwin, we can't afford to increase the local share of our budget, and what I heard resoundingly tonight is that we can't afford to not increase the local share of our budget and pay for our schools. It is both the economic and moral imperative for our city. It is, in many ways, a shame that we have a governor who, despite his constitutional mandate to provide inadequate education for every child, is out raising money at casinos, dark money, to undermine our school system. I hope that he will be a partner in supporting the Kerwin recommendations. I know our legislature will push hard, and I know that our city government will also step up our commitment, because that is what we need to do. With that, President Scott, you want to... I know our legislature will push hard, and I know that our city government will also step up our commitment, because that is what we need to do. With that, President Scott, you want to make closing remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just thank everyone for coming out and echo the chair's sentiments, and just know that this is a top priority for us. We're going to be saying this every time. We know we said to the Budget Department that when they come this year for the fiscal '21, there's two things that we want to talk about. First, how their budgets have been, are going to be presented through a lens of equity. And two, how we're going to give more money to our schools. And I am a little disappointed that, knowing that this was coming, and knowing that this resolution was presented in August, that we didn't have a clear vision from the administration. But, Mr. Chair, I know that we're not voting this resolution out, and we're going to have further hearings and further discussions so that we can, trying to push us to get further down the line as quickly as possible, so that we can be prepared as early as possible to make tough decisions that we all know that we have to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, again, thank you all for coming out tonight. This hearing is adjourned.